One step at a time.
One at a time.
It is now six fifty A. I ask everyone to put their phones on vibrate or silent at this time. Thank you. It is now seven P M. Welcome to the East Point Regular Meeting. Today is December twenty first, two thousand and twenty one, and this is our last meeting of the year, everybody. We've made it. We're gonna start our meeting like we always do with the invocation with our mayor Pro Tem. She has been doing a phenomenal job since I've been on council and has been, she did a phenomenal job at the Christmas tree lighting. So I want to say good evening to everyone again and good evening, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dear God, we thank you for the many blessings that you have given us. We are grateful for all the East Point residents who volunteer their time and talent for the betterment of our city. Whether it is serving on a board or commission, coaching a youth activity, or helping a local charity, we are reminded that it is in giving that we truly receive. Let us during this holiday season all keep that in our hearts. Let us all be challenged to look and see what we have to give. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pleasure, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone that was a part of the invocation, that took part in that, and also the pleasure of allegiance. The invocation is my favorite part of the meeting. So we're gonna go right into roll call. We have Mr. Gaston that is taking that role because we have a new city manager. Welcome again and congratulations to Ms. Walton. Mr. Gaston, good evening again.
Good evening again. Councilmember Baker?
Here, East Point, Michigan.
Councilmember Curly?
Here, East Point.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Here, East Point.
Councilmember Lucito?
Here, East Point.
And Mayor Owens?
Here in East Point. Thank you. On the approval of the agenda at this time, council?
Madam, Madam Mayor?
You wanna add something again?
No, Madam Mayor, actually, I was just commenting before we went on the air that this is the first time I've added anything to the agenda in about eighteen years. But I feel that we have to, Madam Mayor, because this is our last meeting in December and we're not sure. We're doubt very much if that Lansing's gonna pass that we can do a Zoom after this meeting tonight. So we'll probably be going to City Hall in the first meeting in January. So I, I feel that we might wanna talk about it briefly, whatever you're gonna require of the people coming there, that type of thing. So if I might, I like to add, let's call it return to, return to council chambers, item A A.
Court. Okay, motion and support with that change for item A A, return to council chambers. Can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Thank you all. The next item is the hearing of the public. You get, we have two parts of the hearing of the public, one in the beginning and one at the end. So if you don't get enough time in the beginning, we give you enough time at the end, hopefully. And also you can send us an email if you don't get to get it all out in the six minutes that we give you. The first hearing of the public is now open. Mr. Gaston?
Um, Mayor Owens, we have Susan Gary S.
Good evening, Mr. Gary S.
Good evening, Mayor Owens. Councilmembers Gary Sasek, lifelong member and resident of East Point and also chairman of the East Point Parks Commission. And the reason I'm speaking tonight during the hearing of the public is after looking at the agenda and the packet, I'm a little concerned with some of the choices going on in regards to appointments for the Parks Commission and also the terms. Under the ordinance for the commissions and boards, those ordinance typically state that it will be from August first to July thirty first. And I've noticed that three people that are either being reappointed or appointed tonight are going to have terms that will be expiring in October for some reason. The other concern I have is the appointment of Ms. Deonda Easley. Ms. Easley was on the Parks Commission previously. She was not attending meetings. She never notified us that she would not be attending meetings. And we asked her to resign if there was a problem with her scheduling. She refused to do that and we literally had to bring it before council following our bylaws to have her removed from council. And I think it would, I think if Ms. Easley is looking to be on another commission, she should be rewarded with a different position and a different commission that may work with her. But I do not feel she would be appropriately placed back on the Parks Commission at this time. And thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Your comment. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak at this time?
Yes, Mayor Owens, we have Craig Wodecki.
Oh, hi. Good evening, Mr. Wodecki.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council and fellow citizens. Craig Wodecki, a member of the Library Commission. I noticed on your agenda today that you're going to be discussing the HVAC at the library. We also discussed it today at our commission meeting. And I just wanna take a moment as a member of the commission. I know a lot of times these hearing in the public's, people air their grievances and things as such, but on this one, I'd like to thank and really recognize the work of Mr. Joe Marucci. It don't, I don't believe if it wasn't for Mr. Marucci's efforts, his HVAC project would never have been completed. He was very helpful to the commission, pointed us in the right direction pretty much every step of the way, walked us through it and kept us in the loop and kept the contractors and those of the like in the loop. And I just wanted to take a minute to thank him for his efforts because a lot of times the employees don't get recognized. And I believe that in this point they should because we have a a very temperate library now. There's no hot spots and cold spots and on the whole, the customers are very satisfied. So thanks for your time, everyone, and happy holidays.
Happy holidays, Mr. Wodecki. Thank you for your service on the, on that board, library board. And thank you for my sign during election time as well. Anyone else?
Um, I see nothing in the chat. No hands are raised at this time.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi. Hi, good evening. I'd like to speak.
Um, yes, please.
So I've not heard back from anyone in regards to two weeks ago, I did file a complaint with Deputy Chief Merlo about the officer who screamed in my face when there was no emergency going on. Nobody was going to be injured or die from a little bit of snow falling onto an out of control tenant who certainly should have been ticketed for public nuisance, for disturbing the peace, for violating the nuisance tenant ordinance. And again, no one's gotten back to me, which leaves me to believe that this is not being taken seriously. You can't have officers like that on the force. Chauvin is an example for the entire country to wake up and realize this is what happens when you have officers who are not disciplined for their reckless behavior. They get shuffled around from department to department to department to department. There's no background checks being done. And essentially what it does is it puts the public at large in grave danger. We can't have this. And plus, it is an embarrassment to all of the good officers that are out there. So that blue wall of silence also must stop. And in regards to qualified immunity, that's being used as a dangerous weapon against the public. This is ridiculous. It has to stop. Now, if you don't wanna investigate this matter, if you don't wanna take it seriously, if y'all don't wanna do your job, trust me, there's other agencies out there that will investigate this. And that's really a shame that I have to go to that level because you all are supposed to represent every single one of us in this city, not just some. You represent all of us or you represent none of us. And many of you ran on that campaign promise that you were going to make a difference. You were going to serve the community. You were going to serve all of the residents. No, you've not done that. You failed to do so. And then you don't hide the criticism that you received. And again, I will remind you, as citizens, we have the right under the First Amendment to redress our government of our grievances without fear of reprisal retaliation, not to get snarky sarcastic remarks in return or to just be flat out ignored. You guys know me by now. You don't ignore me because I continue to rattle.
Thank you so much. You have additional three minutes at the end for more positive comments. And anyone else would like to bring more positivity at the end of this year?
Yes, hi, uh, Merrill, I'm just here.
Hi, you again. How are you? We missed you. How are you?
Yeah. Oh, okay. Uh, I'm, I'm over here at, uh, my, at the Caesar's Palace. I'm watching the game.
Hold on, I'm gonna stop you right now because I can barely hear you. Today, we can barely hear you. Any other time we can, we can hear you. So you wanna talk a little bit louder?
Yes. Uh, you got my email and everything. And if there's anything else you need from me, you could get with me. I just wanted to get reimbursed for that hundred forty one dollars and fifteen cents. And I wanna thank Sarah Lucido for speaking up on my behalf. So I'd like to get that, that invoice refunded and you could talk with Darren and resolve this once and for all. Can we do that? Hello?
We're here. You, oh, you wanna respond?
Yes.
We respond with, um, at the end because I think this is on our agenda. So you will hear what we have to say about that in our discussion. Thank you again for coming on here.
Now, uh, I can't get in touch with you at the end. Can you still take care of this for me because you got all of my emails? And we can resolve this today?
Yes, we're gonna resolve it in the agenda, sir. We're gonna resolve it depending upon what the council decides.
Okay. And you respond to me by email?
We're gonna have a solution tonight in the agenda, sir.
Okay. All righty. Uh, I'm gonna enjoy the game and thank you. And I wanna thank Sarah Lucido. But I just was wondering why it took so long. But you know, I understand, you know, that we get paid when there's a per diemium, also fifty two dollars. So I was hoping that's not why it was extended so long. But I was just concerned because it's just a bag of grass and I thought this could've been resolved sooner. But it, it took this long. But I'm very grateful that Sarah spoke up on my behalf and she's gonna lead the pack. Thank you so much and God bless you and have a nice day.
Thank you. You have a good day and happy new year. Enjoy the game, sir.
Yes, bye.
Bye now. Anyone else would like to speak at this time?
See no other hands raised or, and there's nothing in the chat.
Okay. The hearing of the public is now closed. So thank you, everyone who attended the first hearing of the public. We have a second part of the hearing of the public closer to the end. So we're gonna go right into the approval of minutes.
Madam, Madam Mayor, I would move that we would approve the regular minutes of the meeting of December seventh, two thousand and twenty one.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Yes.
Otis, I think you're.
Yeah. Yeah. You're calling the roll. No, I can hear you though.
I don't know what this thing is. Okay, I started. I'm sorry. Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
And Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along. We have a long agenda. I think we're gonna roll through it pretty fast. We have no scheduled hearings. We have no unfinished business. We're gonna go right to reports from administration, starting with our city manager, Ms. Walton. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So this past Thursday, we had the first East Point Holiday Drive Through Celebration. We wanna send a big thank you to the performers. And we had some adorable kids that were out, really talented, a talented singer that was out. So we appreciate them coming out. The subcommittee that assisted, consisting of Mayor Owens and Councilmember Curly. We had members from the fire department, police department. We have an amazing DPW team that worked every single day, especially the day of the event, all the way through the event, assisting with planning, prep, and cleaning up after the event. Also, a special thank you to Tony Lipinski and his team over at RARE for their assistance as well. Our East Point officers celebrated Cops for Kids this past weekend. They visited thirty seven families in the community and had the opportunity to deliver Christmas gifts. So we send a big thank you to our police department, our men and women over there that assisted with the event. We have some amazing officers that volunteered their time and finances to give back to the community and their service is definitely appreciated. We are in preparation for the virtual meetings as Councilmember Curly had mentioned, to end as of December thirty first. So we're going, planning to go back in person as of January. So we're watching from updates to the state to approve an extension. If they do, we will publish that information on the cable channel, Facebook, City Hall, and our website. So we'll be in touch with the community if anything changes. Otherwise, we're planning to be in person. City Hall is closed to the public tomorrow through Friday and then next week also closed Wednesday through Friday for the holiday as well. And then will be reopened on January third, two thousand and twenty two. So we wish everyone a Merry Christmas and happy holidays. And I don't have anything else for my report. I'll keep it brief with the long meeting. But if there's any questions, I could answer those as well.
Any questions for our city manager at this time? Say none. We're going right to our finance director, Mr. Blum. Good evening.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council. Since we just had an audit meeting, I don't think we have too much to talk about here. But I would like to point out that a week ago, we had our grand opening for the payment kiosk aside the main entrance. It has been functioning fairly well. We had a couple glitches yesterday and today, but that gave us a chance to find out how well they would respond with service. And they were able to come out and get the things working within an hour of our phone call. So we are very pleased to see that. But that, that gives people the opportunity to come in and pay their bills while we're closed for the next couple days. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for our finance director? Say none. Going to our city attorney, Mr. Albright.
Good evening, Mad, good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of council. Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy New Year. I know Mr. Curly and Ms. Walton did touch on the council no longer being able to meet remotely after December thirty first. That is correct. For anyone watching at home, the council passed a resolution to declare a limited state of emergency back on March thirty first of this year, which allowed city council and other boards and commissions to meet remotely, which would not be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. That limited state of emergency does expire on December thirty first of this year. And so the first meeting in January by the city council will be held in person, absent a rule change from Lansing and action taken by the city council. So I will continue, and I know Ms. Walton's also monitoring any changes from Lansing. If we do hear something, we will certainly let the council know. And so the council has the option to possibly pass another resolution to meet remotely or to just go along with the current laws and then meet in person come January. Another update, members of council, I did attempt to meet with the representative from Bird Scooter. We had a scheduled telephone conference this morning at ten o'clock. I was not able to reach him. I did leave him a voicemail. And I also asked my assistant to get, attempt to get in touch with him via email to reschedule that telephone conference. So that is all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, Mr. Albright, in that conversation with the Bird Scooter, was that in regards to him adding that for our public safety, get to use it with no charge? Because I know they said they never thought about that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I had actually had several questions for the gentleman, including, I wanted to see a copy of what his company was using with regard to where the scooters are to be stored and that kind of thing. And so that was one of the, that was also one of the topics that I planned on discussing with him, but unfortunately, I was not able to touch base with him today.
Oh, wow. Okay, thank you. Any questions for our attorney at this time?
I was gonna say, I don't think anyone minds that the bird agreement's not on the agenda. We can save that for a shorter.
That'll be item A B, though, if we did.
Sounds nice.
Yeah, I actually was gonna add one, but I'll, you know, I said no, so I was surprised Mr. Curly did. Um, we have our public safety director on here, Mr. Rohib. If you want to add to any good updates? You have the floor.
Anybody, Madam Mayor, council. Well, the only thing, I covered the Cops for Kids. That went great. Everybody was happy. We just hired a police officer this week, Cameron Kraszewski. He was a police service agent. He just recently graduated from McComb Police Academy. So he is a new member of our department. We're still three police officers short. We are still hiring. Our, we're looking at hiring one more firefighter right now. We're getting real close. And right now, we're just getting into setting goals for next year. And we're gonna be beginning to start working on our budget in, in January. So other than that, everything's been relatively quiet, which is a good thing. And Merry Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas to you. Happy holidays. Thank you. Any questions for our director at this time? Say none. We're gonna go to new business. Almost there. Starting with the approval to purchase an outdoor early warning system siren. Council, if you have any questions or concerns, we have our fire director on here, deputy director on here, Mr. Nick Sage. But if you don't, you can move forward.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the purchase of an outdoor early warning system siren replacement from West Shore Services and Corporation for the amount of twenty three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, includes a twelve hundred and fifty dollars rate in.
Support.
Motion and support. Any more discussion? Say none. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucito?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
Next item is item A A, return to council chambers via Zoom or in-person hybrid. I know this was just put on by Councilman Curly. So Councilman Curly, you may take the floor at this time.
For the hybrid, for what? I'm sorry, do you?
The item that you added to the agenda, I'm gonna let you open it up.
Oh, we're gonna do A A right now?
Yes.
All right. Um, well, we heard from our city attorney and our city manager and the House and the Senate has already went home from Lansing. So there'll be nothing happening until after all the holidays, the first part of January. So it looks like we're gonna be going into the council chambers. I'm concerned, I think that we have to set some perimeters. And one of the perimeters I think we need to set, Madam Mayor, is that anyone that enters the council chambers, including the mayor and the council, city manager, and anybody else that's there, will have to wear a mask. Now, if the, if the citizens don't wanna wear a mask, they would be welcome to sit out in the hall. But under police orders, they would have to have a mask when they come in and keep that mask on at, through the entire meeting. That's the main purpose that I think that we, we have to take a look at, council members, is that everybody would have to wear a mask. Crazy things are happening in America right now, as we all know. And we have close friends and relatives and loved ones that have attracted the disease. So we've, we've gotta be terribly careful, careful.
Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Mr. Curly. I think that we do need to maybe put a policy in place that during our council meetings, that everyone wears a mask. Also, I think that we need to look at administration and make sure that they can maybe set up our council chambers. So we have a little bit more separation between the people coming in and also us sitting up at the council table. So that would be my other recommendation, too, is to kind of have administration maybe go into the council chambers and see if there's a way to kind of rearrange things where we can be, you know, spread out a little bit more.
I'll fight the ideas. Any more? Oh, Councilman De Monaco, I didn't see you. Sorry.
I was just gonna say I'd be happy to motion about the masks, just that city council meetings require masks for everyone present and also for board and commission meetings, then, too, that would be in person.
I'll support that since I brought it up.
Motion and support. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito?
Yes.
Next item is scheduling a public hearing for the twenty twenty two Community Development Black Grant Program. Council, did you all have any dates in mind?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm fine with the date recommended by administration for January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty two.
Okay, so am I.
That's fine.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve this scheduling of a public hearing for the purposes of public comment for the allocation of CBD public service funds and the selection of projects for the CBD competitive bricks and mortar projects for January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty two for the city, the city council meeting.
Support.
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucito?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next item is the East Point Memorial Library Habit Project Final Report. We have A E W on the line if you have questions. If not, let's move forward.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I would be delighted, since I'm on that committee, to move that to, to receive and file the final report on the East Point Memorial Library HVAC system upgrade.
Support.
Motion and support. Any conversation on this? Say none. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. We'll ride along to engineering. We'll ride along to engineering proposal, ten mile road basketball court. We have, again, AEW here. If you have any questions, council?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I did have one question, actually. I don't know how the rest of the council would figure, feel. But I wouldn't mind wondering, like, what the difference between putting one court in and two courts and price would be?
No, I agree. I was thinking the same thing. Thank you, council.
About a hundred forty-one thousand dollars.
Mr. Kern.
Yeah, I guess. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I had the question, I'm assuming you're asking two full courts?
Yes.
Yeah, we did look into that. There is room there to put two full courts if that was desired. However, if we were to do two full court, two full courts, there wouldn't be really any room there in that empty lot for any parking. With one full court, that would allow for some part, not a lot, but some parking there. If we did put two full courts there, we really wouldn't have any parking available there. Cost would double. If there was two full courts, it would double from a hundred and forty thousand to the two hundred and eighty thousand if you were to do two full courts.
Well, Madam, Madam Mayor, there's, there's, there's on-street parking there, right? We do have on-street parking.
Not, not, not a ten-mile. The closest on-street parking would be over on Flock Street, which is on the other side of the church from where this is proposed, or the church property.
And if, you know, if we talked about building two, you know, you always, Ryan, you always go to stores. Now, come on now. You go to stores and if you buy one, it's so such and such, but if you buy two, you get a discount. What do you think of that?
I mean, there could be a slight cost difference in obviously doing two, but you're looking at, it'd be a lot, obviously a lot more money. You're looking at a two-hundred thousand dollar range with doing two courts.
What about, I don't know how that looks. I don't play basketball, but what about one half-court?
Maybe.
See how that looks and how that works. Yes, Mr. Marucci, I see you waving your hand like you just don't care. Listen, Marucci, I'll let you add to this.
So that's really a question that's appropriate for people from the Parks Commission. But the Parks Commission looked at this and there was a suggestion and there actually was a vote taken. Instead of two half-courts, the decision was to go with one full court at this point in time. So they made it a conscious decision to do it this way.
I think, Mayor, were you asking one full and one half?
No, I was asking how much for one half-court? Just to see how it works for the community and then go back and see how it works and then add the other half. I think Councilman Baker, once he answered this, then I'll let you have the floor. How much to install one half-court? How much would be the difference, Mr. Kern, that's on you?
Roughly be half the cost of what a full court would be. So you're looking at about seventy, seventy thousand.
Okay. Councilman Baker?
Oh, yeah. Just as a person who used to play a lot of basketball back in my younger days, a full court would be more ideal. It gives more people an opportunity to play. Just one half-court would be really, a really small area. And would, that would include only probably one basketball rim. It wouldn't give kids an opportunity to play on either side of the court. Usually when you have one full court, if it's a small group, they play on one rim and then somebody else gets to play on the other. So that one full court would be, in my opinion, a better option as opposed to just a half, just from prior experience.
Councilwoman Lucido?
Yeah, I would definitely prefer going with a full court over a half-court. But I understand AEW's opposition with the parking, so I'm ready to make a motion if everyone's okay with it.
Yes, Councilman Curly and then Councilman DeMonico. Councilman Curly, you're on mute.
Well, I don't know how that happens. Somebody must, somebody else must be in the room. They don't want me to, they don't want me to talk, man. So anyway, we haven't talked about, I know Councilwoman Lucido is gonna make a motion, but I would assume that motion's gonna be for a concrete basketball court and not asphalt. I would hope, because if any of y'all paid on asphalt, that's, that's nice. But in some time when it's ninety-seven degrees, you're gonna be rushing down the court, you're gonna stop because you got stuck in the, in the asphalt. So Councilman Lucido, I hope that you, your motion is going to indicate that we favor a concrete court. Please.
Okay, thank you. Councilman DeMonico?
And thank you, Mayor. That was Councilman Curly, one of my questions. I was certainly leaning towards concrete, but I also thought, is there some sort of, you know, I didn't end up figuring it out. I don't know what the name of it is, but some sort of surface that goes over the concrete to, to make it like a little softer. I don't know what it's called. I don't know if Mr. Kern or someone else knows, but are we putting that over the top? I couldn't tell by the list of, you know, the, your, your list, the AEW list here in our packet.
Yeah, acrylic coating, I'm assuming is what you're talking about. We did include costs for that.
Okay.
Again, that's up to the city's desire, whether they want to do that or not.
That's included in both of the.
Yes.
Okay. And that's usually, that's like, that's the same kind of thing that's been installed in some other, like Clinton Township, I think, just.
Yes, they did that as well. Yes. Yeah, you could choose different colors and that, yeah.
Perfect. And then I, I had one question, too, then, about a fence around it. And I guess, I guess it might not matter if we built a second one eventually, if we did ever go in that direction. But I think potentially a fence is unnecessary. I don't think we really need that. I think usually that's when it's close to the street, so the ball just doesn't roll into the street. And I think I just prefer we don't build one. And that was, that was all my items.
Madam Mayor?
I'm gonna let Councilwoman go and then you, Mr. Curly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think with, with how close it is to ten-mile, I think having a fence around it is important. Because it's not like a side street where if the ball goes into the side street, I mean, I know there's still a little bit of distance. But, you know, I would hate for kids to be running in a ten-mile after a basketball, so I, I would prefer having a fence.
There's a distance of an entire basketball court, I think.
Councilman Curly?
Yeah, thank you. Councilman DeMonico, I, I think you will agree when I tell you that I don't think you've ever seen a tennis court without a fence. Because they'd be chasing that ball all the way down the middle of the park, if that's where the tennis courts were. The fence is, is there, so they don't have to run. My goodness gracious, how, how far would that ball go if there was no fence? And you took a shot and you, you missed the whole backboard and the ball went, you know, thirty, forty yards, probably. So, but the cost of actual, what it's gonna cost for a fence, I think the cost would be well worth it, in my opinion.
Councilman DeMonico?
Sure. Just quick follow-up, then, I think, well, first of all, what was my first item? Well, I guess the second item, so we, over at the skate park and the pickleball court, I think we lock those at a certain time of night, I guess. So if we're putting the fence up, we're just leaving it open, not dealing with that, right? We're, if we're putting the fence up, we're not going over there, locking it, unlocking it every day, then?
Councilwoman.
I think that's something that can be addressed after it's up. If there's an issue and we feel like it needs to be locked, if our public safety, if there's concerns or there's issues with it and they need to lock it, they can come to us and ask to start locking it or they can just start locking it, in my opinion, themselves. But, I mean, I don't, I don't think that's something we need to decide on tonight.
Yes, Mr. Marucci, you guys are on mute.
And the skateboard park are open. They are not locked any longer. The normal park hours of six AM to ten PM.
Oh, I wasn't aware. We changed that.
About three years ago.
We just talked last summer even, or something about it being locked up, or that was way more recent than that.
That I don't know, but I unlocked it three years ago because I thought the regular park has hours of six AM to ten PM. We've never received a complaint since we've unlocked it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Kern, now you have two half-courts and one full court, and you have only two prices. So either we did the two half-courts or the one full court, the prices still are consistent to those.
Yeah, it's basically the same size project regardless if you do two half or one full, very little difference.
Okay, but it's designed differently, though.
There would be some design differences, but the size of the project, the size of the court would probably be the same, yeah.
Okay. Well, we had a motion on the floor. Do we get support? Go, Councilman, Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Lucido.
I have not made a motion yet, but I will make one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
A motion to approve the ADW engineering proposal dated October seventh, twenty-twenty-one for the design of the full-court option with concrete at the ten-mile road basketball court location.
Support.
Motion is supported. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Now, okay, I'm gonna vote yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
And Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Next item is the engineering proposal for Kelly Road Traffic Signal Modernization. And we also have AEW. There are star for the next couple pieces on here. If you guys have any questions for them concerning this.
Madam, Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion to approve the engineering proposal from AEW dated November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one regarding the traffic signal modernization project for the Kelly Road Traffic Signals.
Support.
I have one quick question for Mr. Kern. Why, I know modernization is important, but why is this substantial for this project? I mean, what's the importance of it? I mean, is it gonna slow down people from driving? Is it gonna cause less crashes? I mean, even though we're spending eighty thousand dollars and the government is spending half a million, it's still eighty thousand dollars, eighty thousand dollars.
So basically, it's a similar project to what we're about to start and was approved on nine mile and ten mile with the traffic signal improvements there. It'd basically be the same thing where we're changing the traffic signals from their current configuration to what they call a box span configuration, which has shown to reduce crashes and it is, is a safer, it's been proven to, to be safer with having that configuration. That's what M dot, that's M dot standard now. If for standard traffic signal installation is to do a box span installation. The city is, was approved for a congestion mitigation air quality grant to do this work. So a hundred percent of the construction cost is being funded through that grant program at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the only costs for this project to the city are the engineering and construction administration costs.
Okay. When they did the study, how many crashes was in that area for this to be something that is important to do? I don't remember.
I don't have, I don't have that information on hand. I could get that information for you. If you desire, I can get that to you.
Okay, I just wanted to know for safety purposes or we go in the future for getting anything in the streets for, you know, speed bumps or anything like that. Okay, we had, thank you, sir. Oh, Councilman DeMonico?
Thanks, Mayor. And maybe I had a question, too, that maybe would, probably won't have an answer at this very moment. But what would the difference, I know we've talked about this before, about the mast arms and on Kelly? You know, I'm just thinking, again, I've thought about this a little bit since we last talked about it at a council meeting. And I'm just thinking, if we, you know, I think it'd be a great idea to invest more in our community, you know, for expecting people to invest on Kelly Road. I was even, you know, doing a little more research, found a Department of Transportation guide that even suggests it's good for the socioeconomic impact. You know, they, it's like their official document says that span wire installations, which is what we're talking about in the packet, are generally considered less aesthetically pleasing than mast arms because overhead wires, you know, cleans it up a bit, makes it look a little, you know, classier. I think, like we talked about at a previous meeting, I was just curious what the, can you give us an estimate difference?
Yeah, it is a substantial cost difference. If you put the decorative mast arms, it's usually about a hundred, hundred and fifty thousand dollars more per intersection to do those mast arms. It might be even a little bit more with Kelly Road with it being a divided highway. There is a substantial cost difference there. And with this grant that was applied for, it was applied for us to do standard wood poles or steel strain poles or using existing poles, similar to what we're doing on nine and ten mile. That's what was, that's what was put into the application that was submitted almost two years ago for this project to be considered. So if, if the city were to look at, at improving that even further with mast arms, that additional cost would have to be funded through the city.
Well, so how is it funded typically with, I mean, because plenty of other communities have done this. You're telling me every pole they're paying an extra a hundred grand?
Correct, yeah. Or they've, or they may have included it in their grant application at the time. I, I'm not sure on that, but I know of other communities that have had to pay, basically funded on the city's funds to do mast arms rather than standard wood poles.
Well, if there were other items that city council members wanted to see, you know, answers to, maybe we can table this just the next meeting. It sounded like the construction for this wasn't till twenty-twenty-three anyway, so it sounds like we have some, some time here.
I guess just, I guess just to answer, the reason we did put this forward now, even though construction isn't twenty-twenty-three, it does have to go through the whole M dot local agency process, which does take several months to do. Once we get the project designed, it has to go through several reviews with M dot. And then with the, with the nine mile and ten mile project that's currently ongoing, you know, we were hoping to have that project started here this past fall and it's not gonna start here until after the first of the year due to delays with materials, which is common, been common here recently with a lot of construction projects. We see that happen. We think that's gonna continue for a while here where there will be delays with getting material and, and then going through that local agency process. It's gonna take some time. It'll take probably up to a year. That's why we're looking at getting this design proposal approved now so we can be ready as soon as the construction season starts in twenty-twenty-three, so we don't have any further delays.
I guess I don't know how the rest of the city council feels, but I, I, I wouldn't mind seeing at least a written estimate of the cost and then consider it potentially at our next meeting.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Traditionally, and I go back all the way nineteen eighty-eight, traditionally, when one of our fellow councilpersons feel strongly enough about tabling an item until the next meeting, we, we almost always go along that with that. So if Councilman DeMonico feels that strongly about waiting till the next meeting, I would, I would agree with that.
The only reason, I mean, that's up to him, but I know when we, when, we talked about this before, I don't think any of council was interested in it. But if you are talking about sending it back as far as trying to put it in a grant, I mean, is that what you're saying, Mr. DeMonico, if we can put it and add it to the grant or?
Well, I think at this point, it sounds like the city would have to pay for it. It sounds like our grant issue. The grant is long gone, or, well, not long gone, but the process has been gone through already. So I just, before, we didn't have any sort of, you know, it was just an informal discussion about estimates. You know, maybe after, you know, the two weeks between now and the next meeting, we can get more specific and just take a look at, you know, a more formal situation than just informally speaking about them.
Councilwoman?
Yes, I'm, I'm fine with tabling it also to give Councilman Monica a little bit more time. But also moving forward, I guess this is a question for Mr. Kern. If we do apply for any more grants for traffic lights, is there any way we can apply for the grants with the arms? Because, I mean, that's something that obviously, I mean, I know I would be more interested in than doing the overhead wire ones.
Yeah, that's something we can look at for future grants. That's, we can definitely look at that and see what can be done, yeah.
Really wants to change this motion to table, I would, I would be happy with supporting that also.
Sure, yeah.
Do you wanna make the, make the motion?
Oh, sure, yeah. Mayor, motion that we table the engineering proposal for the Kelly Road Traffic Signal Modernization to the next meeting to get answers on the mast arm questions. And I guess you could, your, your questions to Madam Mayor about the traffic or crash data. mast arm questions, and I guess you could, your, your questions to madam mayor about the, um, traffic, uh, or, uh, crash data.
Yeah. I'll support that. Thank you. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Um, Mayor Owens, you already had a motion and support on the floor. How does, how do we handle that?
She, she's taken that back. She did put the motion out on the floor. Um, you have to, uh, I think she's changed it. Councilwoman?
Curly.
Councilwoman. Yeah, okay, it was Councilman Curly. He made the motion, so you're changing, he's disregarding the motion, I think.
I, I, no, I, I didn't make a motion. I, I sounded off supporting one of our councilpeople who desires to, um, have this put on the next agenda. I, I, there wasn't a motion. I was just supporting Councilman DeMonaco.
There was an original motion and it was supported by Baker. And then he came back with, um.
Who, who, um, said it, Mister Gadsen?
Um, Councilmember Curly made the original motion.
Okay, I, I withdraw, I withdraw my motion.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. So, Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Member Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, the next item is the consideration of proposed ordinances for the city parks. And this is just the cost of advertising the public hearing. I think we changed the park rules already. Is that correct? Mister Albright? These already are, um, installed to change these rules.
Madam mayor, I believe that these are, uh, new rules as proposed. Um, Mister Marucci, uh, has brought these before the, uh, city council for consideration, uh, and have passed to instruct our office to, uh, create an ordinance.
Okay, my only concern with this, um, I think I talked to Mister Marucci about this before. With the inflatables, dunk tanks, petting zoos, ponies, large tents, trains, and et cetera, it says are not permitted. And you said that was a reason being, Mister Marucci, again?
We have so many, when, when those instances happen, it's always because of a rental pavilion, which rare happens. And the people who've been, uh, providing that equipment have been, become unruly. They come before their appointed time. They drive vehicles into the park. They don't take the, uh, the, uh, inflatables or trains down in a timely fashion because it should be done the same day. And so they just said, people don't listen, and it really got to the point where, you know, they've actually, uh, you know, threatened violence. And so the rare people are like, we don't wanna deal with it. So rare has gone to both Roseville and to East Point, and Roseville has banned these inflatables. The Parks Board has taken a separate vote on this and it's, uh, favored banning them, and that's why it included it in the park rules. And you will notice there's two different sets of park rules because the larger parks, which are Kennedy, Spindler, and Memorial, allow, uh, the drinking of beer and wine.
Right.
Certain areas, but not alcoholic liquor. The other parks don't have, uh, either onsite parking or they don't, you are not allowed to, uh, drink beer and wine in the smaller parks, gets rain, fairly, and so forth. So that's why you'll see two different set of rules as well. And then, uh, the one with respect to the larger parks also gives information that if you're interested in running a pavilion, it's not really park rules. It's more informative versus regulatory's. Contact rare at this phone number and you can find out how to do it. So, that's, that's.
Before I continue, um, councilwoman Lucido?
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. Um, I guess this is a question for, um, I don't know, Mister Marucci or Mister Albright. So the inflatables, dunk tanks, petting zoos, ponies, large tents, trains, et cetera are not permitted. Um, I, I know that's one of the rules of rare, that rare passed that they were no longer going to permit those. But do we need to actually place that in our ordinances? Because in the future, if rare were to switch it, then we would have to change our ordinance. So my question is, I, I'm fine with, because of the fact that we would, that would go through rare right now anyways, and that's the way they're leaning is to not allow them. But we do, we need to actually add that to our city ordinances.
My belief is yes, for the simple reason you actually do have people who come, uh, unannounced with an inflatable. So they don't actually run a pavilion, they just take an open space in the park and decide inflatable. So, and I don't see rare changing this.
My only concern is, just for instance, um, as council knows, I do a lot of city events and with children and back-to-school events, and I think they have been very successful, and I do them in the park. And, uh, some have been done with inflatables and some have been done with trains and et cetera. So this, um, this rule in here is so, it just limits people. Or people that have an organization might wanna have an event, so can we put something together? Now, if this is the park rules, depending upon an event that people have signed up and it goes through council. So if I have an event that goes through council, a city event or organization lets you know that these will be, um, in place and they also have the, um, what do you call that? The liability for it that's covering it, the insurance. It should be done by case-to-case basis and not just saying you can't have it here. It should be something that says, okay, inflatables, dunk tanks, petting zones, and et cetera are not permitted unless, or something like that. So if someone has an event or, or anything in the future, depending upon what kind of event it have, it is, it has to go through council's approval or something like that. Councilwoman Lucido?
Yes, um, I do kinda agree with the, with madam mayor. Um, I think that, I'm wondering if there's a way we can do it where, um, so like, like we did sizzling summer nights, and so let's say if rare wanted to bring in inflatables, like if there's any event application, I'm just using them as an example. I don't think they have to do an event application. But if a group does wanna do like an event in the city, um, let's say even our, like our police department, if they would be permitted to use inflatables, like if there's a way for just, if they're, they're actually holding an event to, uh, still permit them. But on a regular basis, I understand, I don't want the person down the street from me just putting one up in the park because of liability, and there's no one there to check the liability insurance. But if it's a recommend, if it's done with through an event application through the city, if there was a way that we could maybe adjust or change it to allow it then.
I think that's the only thing that I was concerned on because I don't wanna stop people from doing events here in the city, and they go somewhere else and do events. It might be any type of organization group that wanna raise money or do something for the city as a whole. I don't wanna stop us from, uh, moving forward and making those partnerships and connections due to that. Uh, Mister Albright?
Yes, madam mayor. Uh, if that, uh, was the direction that the council was leaning, then, um, the, on the East Point Park rules, paragraph three, it could read inflatables, dunk tanks, petting zoos, ponies, large tents, trains, et cetera, are not permitted, uh, without first obtaining an event, uh, permit from the, uh, city or through rare.
I agree with that, and it has to still go through council like any other event, and we will do it by a case-to-case basis. Also, that person will have to have cer, a certain amount, which you will put together, Mister Albright, as far as, um, liability insurance, like we always do. Council, any more conversation on that? Councilman Baker?
Yeah, I guess my question is, um, because of what, uh, the Parks Commission has presented or what rare has presented as the problem, so how do we address that? Because these, they're, what they're, what they said the problem was is that people are driving over the grass. Um, people are putting these things up and not taking them down in a timely fashion. They're putting them up too early. So how do we deal with that? And, uh, because apparently it seems that these are people who are getting applications, but they're not following the rules, um, as to when to put it up, when to take it down, not to drive over the grass and things of that nature. So seems like we're kinda going around, uh, the reason why they wanted that rule. So I, I mean, I understand what everybody else is saying about, you know, special events and things of that nature, but how do we address that?
Councilwoman?
So, um, I understand where your concern is, and rare is not permitting them. So if someone books a pavilion right now through rare, they're not gonna allow an inflatable. And those kind of events aren't going to come to city council with a special event application. It's only gonna be like public events. So let's say like the Lions Club wanted to host, like they used to host Oxros, and they wanted to have inflatables. Um, it's a reputable organization, so I'm assuming that they would kinda, like, I would trust that over, if we have chose to approve an organization to go into the park, that would be on council to make that determination if this is gonna be a reputable, you know, organization that is handling it. You know, if the mayor wants to host her back-to-school event, I'm sure being the mayor, she's gonna make sure that all the rules are followed to a T. So, you know, things like that. So those kind of events can still be done in the park, um, for the community. Like I said, such as sizzling summer nights, if they wanted to have some of these, um, items at the event or, um, if we did the Memorial Day parade and we wanted to incorporate something, like that's a group that's been established in the city that's usually done through the Unites of Columbus and things like that. So I think that, like, that kind of group is gonna, I think, we can kinda make that determination when we approve that event application.
Anyone else would like to speak on this? We can move right along.
Just one.
Councilman DeMonaco?
One quick question, um, madam. So for, for this item, this was just a vote of the rare board then? You should feel, this would be in the minutes. Can we be sent the minutes or, uh, I tried searching real quick while I was sitting here, but can't seem to find them.
This was a vote of the Parks Commission.
No, for the, um, sorry, going back to the, uh, inflatables and all these other items not allowed, because I guess like Mayor Proton Lucido mentioned too, like it says on summer nights, we've done, there's been a petting zoo, or I think a dunk tank and stuff. So since when have we not allowed, I guess a couple of these, I had not heard that were not even allowed at the parks. So when was that decided and how was that decided?
I would say approximately seven, eight months ago, and it wasn't voted by the rare board.
Okay.
If you want, I can supply them to all of you tomorrow.
Yeah, and I did that research, and that was inaccurate, uh, Mister Marucci. I talked to, uh, Mister Lipinski on some of that documentation that was written, and some of that, that, um, information was inaccurate. So what the claims were. And we had a discussion, and he came back and he apologized for some of those things because it wasn't, it was inaccurate. I had a discussion about why this was changed, and some, some was right what he said, and some was inaccurate. So, um, councilwoman Lucido?
No, I was just gonna mention to Councilman DeMonaco that I could, I probably have copies of the minutes too, and I could forward on those, um, tomorrow.
All right, um, I know we need to probably vote on the changes what was recommended by Mister Albright. And then I think the Parks Commission was actually asking us to put it out to, uh, the public so they can know that these are the set rules. Is that correct? For cost of advertisement.
Uh, the Parks Commission request was for Mister Albright, for the council to, uh, direct him, uh, if he achieves a majority vote, to, uh, put these into ordinance format and to, uh, have the council ultimately adopt them when, after the public hearing and, and so forth, and the first rate.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, madam mayor. I'll motion to forward the proposed new park ordinances with the change, um, to add that Mister Albright, um, suggested we add so that, onto the city attorney, so they may be placed into ordinance format for consideration by the city council. So that's with the change that we made.
Well, you're looking for, you're looking for support? You got it, support.
Motion and support, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Next is item G, receiving file the fiscal year twenty twenty-one audited financials. We just had a meeting at six o'clock with this, and, um, Mister Blom, if you have any more questions for Mister Blom or not, uh, you can move forward.
If not, madam mayor, I would move that we, uh, receive and file the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one audited financials.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Now, before I do H I N J, Mister, um, Blom, can you explain to us what is, uh, authorizing deficit elimination plan for each of these? Well, just what the plan is about, period. So when we go through all three of these, we can just slide through it. That's okay with you?
Yeah, any, uh, fund that ends in a deficit based on the treasury definition, uh, we have to present a deficit elimination plan. Um, the first one is the capital fund, which is really the sidewalk, uh, program. Um, this particular one, it really comes down to timing. If the sidewalk work is done in May, we get the billings done in June, the fund is fine. This particular year, the work didn't get done until late May, early June, and we couldn't get all the, uh, billings to the residents done by the end of the fiscal year. So it's created a small deficit. It'll basically takes care of itself in July and August when the billings happen. Um, and the end of fiscal year twenty-two, it will be out of a deficit. The, um, next one is the street lighting fund. Um, we are into the, um, third year of this. Um, if you recall, the street lighting special assessment was not renewed until, um, that was like October of it one year, but it was, it was a, a couple of months late and created a deficit, uh, three fiscal years ago. And so we've had a plan of getting this fund out of a deficit. Uh, fiscal year twenty-two is coming up, and that's when we will get out of a deficit for that fund. But we have to keep resubmitting every year to treasury of where we're at and where we're going to be. And then the third one is the court building fund that went into a deficit when they had a, um, emergency HVAC project that had to be done. And, um, again, this is, was a three-year, uh, plan to get it out of a deficit. Fiscal year twenty-two is the third year, and as long as the court revenues come in where we expect them to be, this fund will be, uh, out of a deficit by the end of fiscal year twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilwoman?
Yeah, I'll motion to adopt resolution number twenty-one dash nineteen thirty-two, authorizing the deficit elimination plan for the capital improvement fund.
For.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next item is, uh, adoption of resolution twenty-one dash nineteen thirty-three.
Yes, madam mayor. I'll motion to adopt resolution number twenty-one dash nineteen thirty-three, authorizing the deficit elimination plan for the street lighting fund.
For.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Next item is adoption of resolution twenty-one dash nineteen thirty-four, council?
Mayor, I'll move.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure it was nineteen thirty-four and nineteen fourteen.
I have that on my agenda.
It says both. It says thirty-four on here and fourteen, so that's why I was just double checking.
Nineteen thirty-four is the correct number.
Okay, then I'll motion to adopt resolution number twenty-one dash nineteen thirty-four, authorizing the deficit elimination plan for the court building fund.
For.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Moving right along to, um, appointments. We're gonna start with appointments for the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, the mayor appointment with, with approval of council. And I have requested that city council approve the following appointments as follows, council?
Yes, madam mayor. I'll motion to reappoint Alyssa Diebold to the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission with a term to expire ten fifteen twenty twenty-three.
For.
Motion and support. Do you guys wanna do all of them at once or one at a time? Councilman DeMonaco?
Um, well, I guess one at a time is my answer to that question. Um, but I had a quick question about all of them for the dates. Um, about October, I guess, as Mister Sasek mentioned, and I don't know if, um, uh, Mister Albright had additional reasons. I did look at the, the Parks Commission does have it built into the, um, I know we're on the Arts Commission right now, but built in that August first is the, um, date for the, uh, terms. The rest are a little more up in the air, but I, uh, uh, I, I guess I would just want to make sure we all do wanna do this, change all of the dates for all these commissions before we go ahead and do it. Because generally, the, uh, Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, um, terms would start and end on July first.
I guess you want to just be consistent, um, Mister Monica, I know, we just want to be consistent. We just want to be consistent. So when we're, um, putting it out, everything is aligned close to the same, uh, time of the year. That's why that was like that, but Mr. Albright.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Yeah, under the, uh, the current ordinance for the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, uh. Under membership qualifications, um, and also the term of office. Provides for that three of the members, uh, there's a seven member total, but three of the members, their term is to be for three years. Uh, and then three members are to, uh, then be have a three-year term and then also for two years and then for one year. So in this case, you have, uh, Ms. Diebold, um. Her term, I believe, expired back on, uh, in 2020. Um, and she was, uh, neither, uh, reappointed or, uh, another member wasn't replaced. So she is now being reappointed. But her term would expire, uh, in 2023. So, uh, what the council could do is that essentially her term is, uh, reverting back to 2020. Uh, to fire then on 10/15/2023. Uh, you also have, uh, Ms. Brozowski's, um. Term expiring in, uh, 2023. Uh, you have the other three members, their terms expire in 2024. Uh, that leaves two members for to either be, um, reappointed or to be replaced. So if the council is going to, uh, uh, address those, uh, two other positions in. In 2022, one of those should have a term expiring in 2023 and another one should expire then in 2025. So it's then consistent, uh, under, uh, terms of office, uh, which is contained in the, uh, the current ordinance.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I'm, I'm fine with trying to keep the dates consistent. So we're trying to renew all these boards and commissions just a couple of times a year instead of having them more spread out. I'm completely fine with the recommendation to keep them in October. I don't know how the rest council feels.
Yeah, I agree with that. We can be more consistent and everybody will pretty much know that October 15th is the time to reapply. Councilman Baker.
Um, yeah, I was just looking. I see that we have five, uh, well, three reappointments, um, potentially and, uh, two new appointments. But, um, I was looking at the list that we were given about the vacancies and I thought that there were six. Seats that were, um, well, there were like four people that were listed for reappointment and then are up for reappointment and then two vacancies. So it looks like we still need, um, someone else. Uh, on one of these seats. So it looks like we're filling five potentially and. It looks like according to the list that we have that there are at least six that need to be reappointed, six or seven that need to be reappointed.
Okay, I think Councilman De Monaco, I stand up first, uh, Councilwoman.
Okay, um, I guess first on the, uh, October thing for all the commissions, I guess I'm against that and I think we're at like two to one. So I don't know how the other two council people feel about that. But then yes, what, yeah, and this, Mr. Baker, um. There's three people up for reappointment and then two new names which could fill in the vacant seats then. And yeah, we'd still need to address two people potentially.
Any other questions? Um, okay, I think we have motion and support. If you get support on that, um, Ms. Diebold.
Yes, we do.
Oh, before, before we move forward, uh, I'm sorry, um.
That's okay.
Are we able to, can we change the dates here or do, do we have to change what's written in the ordinance first before we do that? Like, I mean, what's the legal thing that we can do?
Mr. Albright, can we keep the dates that, uh, I guess by council approval, but do we have to, because it's the ordinance? Do we have to, uh, what do we have to do concerning, um, Councilman Baker's question?
The council can keep the dates as proposed, um, start dates as proposed by city administration. Like I was, um, indicating earlier, because there are seven members and they're essentially. Not all the members s- serve the same terms and you don't want all the members coming up for reappointment at the same time. And so tha- that's why they're staggered. So you have, um, again, out of the five, uh, individuals that are up for tonight. Two of those terms expiring in 2023 and then three of the, uh, positions expiring in 2024. So in order to maintain consistency, uh, the council should consider at least, uh, at a future date, uh, appointing. Uh, or reaffirming one additional person for whose term would expire in 2023 and then appointing or reaffirming a person whose term would expire. In 2025. So you're going from 2022 through 2025, there's three years right there. And then the other members, then their, their terms are all staggered. But the, the October date can be kept, that's something that the council chooses to do.
Councilman De Monaco.
Well, do we, how did the other two, uh, Mr. Baker, Mr. Curly, how do you feel about the October change?
Um, I guess.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, no, I was gonna ask, um, and, and maybe you said it, I just may have missed it. Um, what was your concern with changing the dates to October?
Well, I think, I, I mean, I don't think it's a big deal first of all, but I guess like, uh, some of the commissions or like parks, the dates actually built into that ordinance. And then some of the commissions have like a certain month where they do their, um, elections for their chairperson and stuff like that. I guess we just have to adjust that. There's just a few other considerations, I think it. To me, it's, I don't know, just easy enough to leave as is and do some throughout the year, um.
I don't have a problem with that, uh, Councilman.
If I can, um, I had mentioned the, um, uh, August date that is in the ordinance for Parks Commission. Um, Attorney Albright and I, uh, spoke about that. Mr. Albright, will you touch base on that, um, and how that should be interpreted?
Yeah, there, there's, let me just get into, so I have the exact language.
They're with me, I'm not seeing that language I'm looking for in the, uh. It's, uh, Councilmember, Councilmember De Monaco, do you have that, uh, that section?
Yeah, two dash four five four. Uh, let's see, Division Five Sparks Commission under, uh, Boards and Commissions. Um. Let's see if, I guess if the chat was open very briefly, I could just copy the link and.
Okay, I see it now. Yeah, I see it now. Um, the way that language reads, it says that, um. Three members shall be appointed for a one-year term, two members for a two-year term and two members for three-year terms. Such terms starting, uh, August 1st, 2018. Thereafter, all such appointments except for vacancies shall be for three-year terms starting August 1st, 2019. So that section could be, uh, could be interpreted, uh, a couple of different ways. The council could take the position that, um, that is start date for all reappointments is August 1st, 2019 of, uh, of each year. Or it could take another reading, another reasonable reading would be that, uh, after August 1st of 2019, um. All the terms shall be for three terms or all the, all the positions shall be for three terms after August, uh, 1st of 2019. So it really is, uh, how the council wants to interpret that, but, uh, either interpretation would be correct.
Okay, so it's up to us, essentially.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if, if the council wants to change, uh, that particular ordinance language to be more specific. It could do so to indicate that, uh, terms, uh, uh, all new terms shall commence on August 1st. Um, it could also do that with the, um, with the, um. Uh, the other ordinance as well to specifically indicate, indicate, for instance, for arts and cultural diversity. That all terms shall commence on October 1st of, uh, each of the years. Uh, that's kind of specificity right now is not in the ordinances.
Okay.
More questions, Mr. De Monaco?
Also, I didn't know what Mr. Baker and Mr. Curly done.
Councilman Baker, I think Councilman Curly said.
No, I said, I said that was fine.
Councilman Baker.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't necessarily, I mean, I understand the, the concerns, but I don't necessarily have a problem with the date change just for simplicity. But I, I did have a question too, because, you know, as I was asking about, um, the vacancies, I know that there was somebody else that was up for reappointment. Um, and it looks like we still have at least another seat to fill. And so I guess my question was what, is there a plan of what we're gonna do about that? Because I know somebody else that had, uh, reapplied to, to still be on the Arts Commission. Um, and there's still room for that person to be on. So I guess I was just curious about that since there, since it looks like we leave, at least need to fill at least one more seat.
Councilwoman.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So yes, um, Ms. Lalande, um, is, um, up for reappointment and along with Megan Wilson's seat. Um, we do have an application from Joyce Lalande. If the mayor wanted to add to reappoint her to the commission, we didn't, I do not have, uh, application for Ms. Wilson. So I don't know if the mayor would want to reappoint Ms. Wilson without an application or if she would wanna wait to, um, a later date. But, um, yes, Ms. Lalande's seat is also up for a reappointment if you wanted to add that tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, let's add her on there as reappointment.
Okay.
So, Mr. Baker, you were, you were saying you're fine with the October done?
Um, yeah, yeah, the change doesn't bother me. Uh, I, I think, like you said, I think the, uh, the hiccups are easy enough to work around, I believe.
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
Hey, you guys ready? We've got a lot more on here. You ready?
Clarify the date on Ms. Lalande's reappointment.
Would it be 10/15/2023 as well, since I think, uh, Ms. Diebold and, um, Ms. Brozowski, they all came in together. And since she's up to reappointment, all three of them were up for reappointment. So I'm thinking, and Mr. Karen, Karen, I'm sorry. So 10/15, uh, 2023. Councilwoman.
Yeah, that, that works. That's, that's what I had written down because it was either 23 or 25, but I fear we wait till we, you decide on Ms. Wilson if we're gonna do, when we do 25. So, um, I think I already made a motion for, uh, Ms. Diebold.
Yeah, I'll support it.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco.
Stand.
And. Curly.
You better say yes, yeah, yes.
Um, next reappointment, April Brozowski.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to reappoint April Brozowski to the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission with a term to expire 10/15/2023.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Be consistent with the reappointments, Ms. Lalande, reappointment for 10/15/2023, council.
Mayor, I'll motion that we, uh, reappoint Ms. Lalande with the term to expire 10/15/2023.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Next is Christopher Charen, reappointment term to expire 10/15/2024.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to reappoint Christopher Charen to the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission with a term to expire on 10/15/2024.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco.
Yes.
Next new appointment is Jolene Williams. Council.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to appoint Jolene Williams to the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission with a term to expire 10/15/2024.
Support.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yeah.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco.
Yes.
Next new appointment, Pam Russell, council.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to appoint Pam Russell to the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission with a term to expire 10/15/2024.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Great. So welcome back for those that, uh, got reappointed and those that are new, welcome. I know you all would do a great job for our city. Thank you so much for even putting your name down to volunteer sign. God bless you. Next is appointments to the Beautification Commission, mayor appointment with approval of council. Now, if you all wanna do this a easier way. We got two reappointments for 10/15/2023. Mr. Wodecki and Ms. Salafia, you always wanna do that together and then. All the new appointments that are consistent with the dates. Or you guys wanna just keep it one at a time. I think it's just makes it more timely, in a timely fashion if we just say the names, reappointment and the terms to expire.
Uh, Mayor, I, I do have a concern. I, um, just me personally, because I know that Betty Bishop's, uh, term is up. And she has not been listed and I just have a, I'm, I'm not for removing somebody off of a commission that's served and. Help move it forward, get it off the ground and keep it going and dedicating their time. So I couldn't do it all together because I can't, um. I'm not in favor of, uh, removing somebody who still wishes to serve that is currently serving on a commission. But that's, that's just my feelings on it.
Okay, anyone else? Councilman De Monaco.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, um, Annette Griffin, um, was on the Beautification Commission, but then she resigned back in August. And she did not want to, uh, continue on the commission. Um, and I called her just to double check, um. She just doesn't, uh, wanna do that sort of work, uh, so, um.
She put the application in, so.
Well, yeah, and she was on the commission, but then resigned a few months later, um. Just, I think, just didn't end up, you know, liking it, I guess, um, so.
Wow.
That would at least leave one position un, unfulfilled then. And then, when my, uh, I guess while I'm on here, uh, Mr. Toma, I would not be, uh, comfortable, uh, pointing to the, uh. Beautification Commission, uh, Mayor, that's, that's Mr. Field Pain, you know, Madam Mayor.
Oh, wow. Well, when he comes on here, it's not, all right, here doesn't say Field Pain on here, okay, when he put out the application. It says Mr. Toma, okay?
Yeah.
So, okay, how do other council members feel before we move forward with some of those suggestions, Councilwoman?
Yes, Madam Mayor, so I definitely would not want to, uh, appoint Annette, Annette Griffin to beautification again if she wasn't happy being on beautification. Um, I would rather hopefully utilize her somewhere else if maybe she'd like better if she doesn't like beautification. Um, so, I mean, I'm definitely not going to appoint her, um. When it comes to Mr. Toma, um, whatever the, whatever you decide, Madam Mayor, um, I will support your decision on that. Um, I don't know if because we're not appointing Annette Griffin, if you would want to reappoint Ms. Bishop.
Um, with Annette Griffin, that was a, uh, form that was given to me, so I only read what's given. So I shouldn't have got that back in my notes if people don't wanna be reappointed or wanna be part of commission. And, uh, Mr. Toma. Anybody else have any concerns about that as well, Mr. Toma? Let's give him, let's give him a try, um, let's replace Ms. Griffin with Ms. Bishop.
Okay.
Mr. De Monaco, you are, um, liaison of the beautification, correct?
And do you want me to make motions? Is that what you're saying? Yes, I am not.
You're, you're gonna have fun with Mr. Toma, that's what I'm saying.
We'll become good friends. We'll talk about. We'll become good friends. We'll talk about how the earth is flat.
Yeah, how to have the skin in water, absolutely. Anybody else have any recommendations? Okay, let's go with it. So Ms. Bishop with a reappointment, we're getting um, I don't wanna say get rid of Ms. Griffin, but she wants a step down. And um, let's go with Mister Wodecki, council.
Sure, Mayor, I'll motion to appoint Mister Craig Wodecki to expired ten fifteen twenty twenty-three to the Beautification Commission.
Or.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
And Mayor Owens.
Yes. Next is Lance Salafia for reappointment.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion that we appoint Winston Lafayette to the Beautification Commission, term to expire ten fifteen twenty twenty-three.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
And Mayor Owens.
Yes. Next item is, since we're doing reappointments, Ms. Bishop for reappointment, council.
And Madam Mayor, I'll motion then that we uh reappoint Betty Bishop to the Beautification Commission uh with term to expire ten fifteen. Think hers would actually be twenty twenty-two if we're keeping uh with the three, three years here, yeah.
Okay.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
We have a new appointment for Lakeeta Cobb, council.
Mayor, I'll motion that we uh appoint Lakeeta Cobb with the term to expire ten fifteen twenty twenty-three.
Support. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Next item, I mean, sorry, next appointment is Brandon Hensley, council.
Mayor, I'll motion that, I'll move that we uh appoint Brandon Hensley uh to beautification with the term to expire ten fifteen twenty twenty-three.
For. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
And Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Next new appointment is Hadel Toma, council.
I'm not making that motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to appoint Hadel Toma to the Beautification Commission with a term to expire ten fifteen twenty twenty-three.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucito.
Yeah.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
No.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes, we gotta give everybody a chance, Councilman DeMonico.
Sure.
Right? You see, they give chances. Next is the appointment to the Board of Ethics. One appointment by each council member with approval of council. Councilman DeMonico is requesting that the City Council approve his appointment as follows, councilman.
Madam.
Sure, so.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, just very briefly, of course, uh Mister Baker was my ethics uh appointment, and he is now, of course, on the City Council. So I put uh Cliff Wilson forward, so I guess just to make this easy, I could just move to appoint Cliff Wilson to the Board of Ethics with a term to expire June thirty twenty twenty-three.
Support.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Next item is the appointment to the East Point Memorial Library Commission. Um, and I, a new appointment for Tiffany and Martin.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, on the Board of Ethics was Lynn Tubin's term expir- I heard, it looked like her term was expired, did she? I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I missed something about her. I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss something, uh.
Oh, sorry, uh, councilman.
I, I believe that's Councilmember Curly's nomination.
I, I, I think I can answer that. So I, I hadn't responded yet, uh while we had a five hundred pages to read this weekend, so I didn't do it. But um, uh, all of our appointments, um, when we originally made the appointments ended at the same time, uh, those ones aren't staggered because. Well, each councilperson basically gets an appointment. I know our sheets have been saying that, but the, but when we made all the motions, she was um appointed to expire. Uh, where's my note here? Uh, the same as everyone else, so yeah, six thirty twenty twenty-three. Um, I can go back in the minutes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You guys ready to move forward?
Yes, thank you.
Sounds good. No, thank you. Um, this new appointment is for the appointment to the East Point Memorial Library Commission for Tiffany and Martin. Council.
Um, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I uh, I did talk to uh Ms. Martin. She said that the Library Commission would not, uh, you know, I talked to her for a few minutes and then talked to her about um what time they meet. Um, she was saying four P M. Uh, did not work for her on Tuesdays with her work schedule.
Okay. So let's come back to this because um Mister Wodecki was on there and he didn't reapply and.
Yes, he did. No, he, no, there's an app, there's an application, Madam Mayor, and for Craig.
No, we didn't see it. City, uh, ma- city manager, wait, hold on, let's have order. Wait, we, we get that order. City Manager, Ms. Walton, did we see one for the library with him? I think it was one we didn't see with him.
I believe it came in, um, if I remember when we were going through it, um, it was in the last um pile of applications that had gone out after your nominations.
So it came out last before I already picked everybody, okay?
Yeah, so he did not select the Library Commission for that application, if I recall, I believe it was the beautification.
Yeah, he just selected beautification, remember? Is that right, Mister Gasson?
Yes.
Cause we rea- we looked at it and we wanted to make sure that he didn't apply for it, and he did not. Because I was on the uh Library Commission with him, and he does an awesome job. So now, if he wants to reapply for that, then, you know, or anybody, I'll take consideration, but I'm not gonna put him on something he did not ask for. Just like Ms. Griffin didn't want it. I don't know how he feels about that. So um, we can come back to this.
No, Madam, Madam Mayor, in all due respect.
Yes, sir.
In all due respect to you, Madam Mayor, he did put his application in, and I don't think you can find a better person to um, to appoint. And he is, uh, and you may or may not know, he is the chairman of the Library Commission.
Well, let's, let's, let's do this so we can move forward. Before I say that, let me see what Councilman DeMonico has to say.
I was just gonna say, he put in multiple applications that way. The last one probably just said beautification, but on July twenty-first of this year, he applied to the um Library Commission.
Okay. I'm looking at what I, what was sent to me in all of council, so I have to go by that. So we didn't see it, which was um. Which was pointed out by Mister Gass and the Mister Walton, Ms. Walton. So if you see that, then I have Councilwoman Lucito.
Yeah, yeah, I do have his application also. Um, it wasn't, it was, that application was not included in our packet, but we did all receive the application back in July.
Okay, that was back in July, it's the end of the year, so I only got what uh the staff gave me. So I have no problem with that. Mister Wodecki. Uh, I know he's on here, he does a good job. I've worked with him for many years um on the Library Commission, but if he wants to be with us again, we'll have you, Mister Wodecki, if you're listening. So let um, let us do a reappointment for Mister Craig Wodecki for the Library Commission. He does an awesome job with that for a term to expire ten fifteen twenty twenty-six, council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your consideration.
Oh, thank you for letting me know, cause we didn't, we didn't see it, and I was like, why didn't he apply?
You know, that's, that's, that's why we always say that none of us are perfect, so I would be more than.
Well, you guys make me perfect when I'm not right, so uh, thank you for that.
I, I would, I would be honored to uh put his name in for the uh Library Commission.
I'll support that.
Thank you. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Absolutely, yes.
And Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Next is appointments to the Parks Commission with Mayor Approval with Approval of Council, starting with Ms. Procola, reappointment, council.
Mayor, I'll move that we reappoint Elizabeth Procola with the term to expire uh ten fifteen twenty twenty-three uh for the Parks Commission.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
And Councilmember Lucito.
Yes. Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, but before we go on to the next one, we do have one more reappointment, and that's for Ms. Rucker, and I don't think we had an application from her. So I was just gonna ask Mister Baker at the next Parks meeting if you could find out if she is still interested, so she could also submit an application for reappointment if she is. We don't have it on the agenda tonight, but just, just a heads up.
Okay, um, yeah, because even with these appointments, there'll still be a vacancy, is that, am I correct on that?
Miss, I don't have that in front of me. I have to get it from City Administration. I don't have all that in front of me.
Yeah, Ms. Rucker's uh term is expired. She's on the board right, on the commission right now, but her term's expired, but she didn't fill out an application, so if you could just ask her at the next Parks meeting.
Okay, I, I, I'll get on that and try to find out.
Yeah, and have her fill one out if she is. We were, it's not gonna be on the, it's not on the air agenda tonight anyways, but just so we can get it done at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, let's do, let's uh put that on the meeting after that. I, I may not make the next meeting. I'll be um out of the office, so let's probably do that on the eighteenth. Or council, or I can put it out there on what my recommendation is, and you guys wanna move it forward, so we can have a full commission moving forward. I don't know how we can do that. Um, let's put it this way, how about she get, if she wants to, and you put it on here, and um she wants to be a re- reappointed, I can go ahead and do it now?
Um, well, no, I think, uh, well, yeah, we need to find out if she wants to, but uh, I think actually the Parks meeting will be after our second meeting in January, so it may have to come just after that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's perfect then. Um, next is uh Ms. Martin. Now, you said you talked to her, Mister DeMonico, she didn't wanna be on the uh Library Commission.
Is excited for Parks, so.
She was excited for Parks. Well, she marked the library, so, yeah. We asked and invited, please mark what you really have interest in. So the mayor can pick you for uh what you're interested in, and you're gonna have to do a better job because you like the job, so, yes, council, uh, Ms. Martin.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll motion to appoint Tiffany and Martin to the Parks Commission with a term to expire on ten fifteen twenty twenty-four.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucito.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Next appointment is De'anda Easley, term to expire ten fifteen twenty twenty-four, council. Any suggestions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, because she was removed by the Parks Commission, I wouldn't feel comfortable reappointing Ms. Easley at this time unless um the Parks, she, the Parks Commission agreed to. Um, want to reappoint her. I mean, that's just my opinion, because they're the ones that hold the meetings and have to worry about quorum and things like that to be able to move forward with getting stuff done.
Okay. Now, why was she, uh, why did the Parks Commission?
She didn't attend for eight, I think it was about eight months she missed straight without any call or reason. Like she, she wasn't responding to emails or anything, so that's why they ended up removing her.
Okay.
Well, Mayor.
Councilman DeMonico.
Well, the suggestion from the Parks Commission then came to us. We voted, let's see, in my notes here, on November ninth twenty twenty is counsel to remove her. We voted unanimously to do that.
I don't know if she knew that, cause she put in the application just recently, so I can go, uh, council.
Well, I know I did talk to her, and she is definitely interested in being part of the Arts Commission again, I mean Parks Commission. Um, so. I would encourage her to go to the Parks Commission meetings and maybe talk to them, and maybe they would make that recommendation moving forward. Cause it seems like she had a lot of stuff going on, and maybe now she has kind of some of that stuff dealt with, and she can, you know, begin to participate in those meetings.
Well, I would think the um, the backing of the mayor would be enough than the parking commission, because if I, uh, if I talk to her as well. So it is an appointment by the mayor, and as the mayor, if I believe in that person, I can do the job and give him a second chance. I would like the council to support that. Now, if she, you know, should give her another chance. Because she told me that she uh had some financial issues. A lot of people don't know how to use Zoom, which was something during COVID, right? And um. She told me her situation, so I'm a mayor that gives second, third chances, so we don't usually do raising of hands, Mister Stacey, during council at this time. Uh, Councilwoman Lucito.
Yes, um, maybe if we can just table this one until the first week of February, and maybe I can go to the Parks meeting, and maybe she would be happy to go to the next Parks meeting and have that discussion with them.
Okay. Yeah, let's, uh, but we, I really, my desire was to get this filled. I don't even know why we have a mayor appointment with approval of council, if it's not gonna be uh approval by the mayor. I don't understand that, but. Let's actually do what you said do, and find out if all of council can talk to her and find, and find out what happened. I know Mister uh Stacey said his piece. And we wanna hear what she has to say as well. Um, let's come back. Did anybody else have any uh other? I didn't see a lot of people apply for Parks Commission when I looked at it, so I'll go back to the, the list, but before that, we're gonna try to see what Ms. Easley has to say. And Ms. uh Lucito will let us know how that meeting went.
Mayor, just for clarification, so do you wanna table that to the second meeting in January?
Yeah, so we can have it filled and move forward. When is the next uh Parks meeting, commission?
The next Parks meeting will be after our second, cause it falls on a Wednesday after our second meeting, so it would have to go uh probably the first meeting in February.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds fair. Uh, my mayor, Mayor Proton will be there, so that's why she's Mayor Proton to let me know what's best. So let's move right along to the appointments to elect the Officers Compensation Commission.
Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, it's Mister Gasson.
Oh, did we do the?
Do we need, do we need a formal motion to table that?
I'm sorry, sir, thank you. Can I get a motion for uh the, to table the new appointment for Ms. Easley?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor, to a table.
Thank you. Support. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lucito.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Is table to after the Parks Mission, and we can see the feelings of the Parks Mission. That's important, because if we have to work together to get things done, we wanna make sure we all um on a court. So let's go to the appointments to elect the Officers Compensation Commission. Um, the first person is uh Shanita Lloyd for new appointment, term to expire five fifteen twenty twenty-eight, council. Any uh conversation on this?
I'll, I'll motion that uh we appoint Shanita Lloyd, term to expire May fifteenth twenty twenty-eight.
Support, call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito.
No.
Councilmember Curly.
No.
Councilmember Baker.
No.
You all have to give me some recommendation.
Well, for me, I still stand on the same thing I said earlier. Um, I'm not in favor of pushing the two reappoint, the. The two reappoint, the people that are already on that are up for reappointment, um, pushing them off the commission, so. That's, that's my only reason. There's nothing against the, uh, new appointments, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's my only thing.
I just wanted to add someone new, because so, someone that was already on this appointment is on another one that I appointed earlier. And I want to give somebody another chance. Councilwoman Lucito.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'm, I disagree with what Mr. Baker said, that, um, you know, Ms. Lalande and Mr. Jakubiak both, um, put a lot of time. Into elective officers compensation, and it only meets like every two years to begin with. But, um, I know they do their work and their research to make sure that we're kind of in line with other communities and things like that, so I think that reappointing them would be the best.
Yeah.
Your appointment selections, I mean, well, Ms. Gladney is already on two other boards and commissions, but it's nothing against Ms. Lloyd.
I took her off one, but one or two. To spread it out, when I say more than one person on something, I tried to spread it out, and I think she was on a couple of them. I think she was on beautification. I think I took her off of that.
No, she's on beautification, and she's on, on ZVA.
Yeah, her term is about to expire soon, I believe. Councilman Curly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I would agree with, uh, Councilman Baker and Councilwoman Lucito that, that I would, uh. Certainly, um, support Joyce Lalande and Monica Jakubiak to stay on the elected officers compensation commission.
Okay. Well, let's do both of those with the same term. Well, no, one has two thousand and twenty-six, and the other one's twenty twenty-seven. So let's do, um, Ms. Lalande first.
Uh, Madam, Madam Mayor, I will move that we appoint Joyce Lalande to the, uh, reappointment to the elected officers compensation commission.
Okay.
Whose term would end May fifteenth two thousand twenty-eight.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the row.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
No.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Next is the reappointment of Walter Jakubiak. Uh, I'm saying it the best way I can, Mr.
That's fine.
I mean, I'm doing the best that I can.
I, I will motion to appoint Walter Jakubiak to the elected officers confirmation with a term to expire five fifteen twenty twenty-seven.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the row.
Councilmember Lucito.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
No.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Real quick, too, um, just to put this on your radar, with the Parks Commission, with Ms. Easily being questionable and with Ms. Rucker. If one of those seats does open up, I know that Ms. Lloyd did apply, I believe, for Parks also, just to kind of head that up. We, we didn't put her on anything, so.
Yeah, yeah, and so we can, um. Yeah, put her back on there for her. Yeah, okay, that sounds good. And I don't want anyone that wanted reappointment and wasn't appointed by the mayor. I am a fair mayor. So if I see someone wants a chance to do something, it's my job to give them a chance, but that doesn't disregard the hard work. That so many of you all have done, and so don't think I disregard that. Thank you all. For the work you do and the volunteering that you do for the city. It means a lot to me and also the residents. So we going right into, uh, the scheduling of special meeting to review capital improvement plan for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three, council.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, I think if we could, uh, for this item and the next item, if I could talk about them kind of jointly for a second, um. We've, well, it's been brought to our attention at, I think, either previous planning commission meetings or this meeting. That the planning commission's supposed to give us input on our capital improvement program, according to the state laws that create. Planning commissions, um, and they probably wouldn't mind giving their input. So if we could even potentially sort of combine these, uh, meetings and do the, uh. Capital improvement part during the planning commission meeting, I think that would be a good idea. It's one less meeting for us also, but, uh. Then of the rest of council, uh, thought the same. I thought I'd at least propose that.
Councilwoman, that sounds like a good idea.
I agree.
Yes.
I agree.
Madam Mayor, I do think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
So moving down to, um, W, um, a special meeting for goal setting session. Um, I was wondering if maybe we could discuss like goal setting, kind of, I, I want, would probably, when we, when we transition to a new city manager, if we do, I would. Probably would like to do a goal setting session then, too, but for now, doing a goal setting session. Also, the same day as the review of capital improvement, because that might kind of go hand in hand. And, um, the planning commission, so maybe we could plan all three of them for kind of the same time.
Hmm, it's not like that would be too much, I'm thinking, 'cause the goal setting session wasn't just with, well. It was with, uh, pretty much everybody. I mean, that, that's how it is now, but. What are you guys thinking?
Well, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Curly.
If, if, you know, if we get to it and don't, don't do it on the same day that we have the council meeting, uh, we'll take whatever time we need to do it. This is. Um. Incredibly important, uh, item that we gotta discuss, as most of the things that we do are. So I wouldn't have a trouble doing this together, but not on the same night as a council meeting.
Yeah. But I wanna, Councilman DeMonico.
Yeah, should we propose, I, I mean, I think I agree with, uh, Mr. Curly for sure. That'd be quite a, quite a night. Um, we could propose a couple different dates and see what works, uh, with the planning commission, off dates for both of us, you know, like. Maybe try to stick with a Tuesday or Thursday, since we both usually meet then. It's probably most likely to work out, and maybe we can start slightly earlier. Um, you know, I don't know what the schedules of a lot of planning commissioners are, but maybe six o'clock or something works. Any earlier, and I'm guessing that some of the planning commissioners might interfere with their, their work schedule, but I'm not certain of that for sure.
That's what I mean, especially me to meet your capital. So what, what you are, uh, thinking, let's get some dates. I don't wanna stay here and, Councilwoman.
What about January twenty-fifth?
One of the dates that I had, uh, already filled into my calendar is tentative.
And February eighth.
That's not a council meeting, right?
No, it's not.
Correct, yeah.
February eighth sounds pretty good, doesn't it?
That'll give them two dates to choose from if that works for the rest of council.
Right.
And should we propose like six P M., try to start earlier, or even?
Yeah.
Um, are, are there any time constraints for anyone on council? Because we could, I, we could propose even earlier than that and see if it works for them.
I think I have a class that day, but I can, um, so I don't, I don't, you know, when you all put these dates together, I have a calendar at home. I didn't bring. So, you know, with, uh, a lot of other things that I do, and having children, I don't know what their schedule is. I have to, I can't sometimes put everything together. Um, at one night, I have to make sure, uh, my kids come first, so. If you guys wanna schedule a, a date and we can come back, if I can, if I can't do it, I'll, you know, I'll let you all know.
Why don't we schedule February eighth contingent upon the rest of the council? Check in your schedule and see if that would be okay. At least, let's go ahead and schedule it, but contingent upon whatever.
It sounds good.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we gonna propose both dates to the planning commission, so they can decide, or we just giving them one date?
We're not, well, we're gonna do February with, February eighth with them too, right?
Well, I'm saying to give them a choice, because there's seven of them, so one of those dates might not work for one of them. So I thought we were gonna propose a couple of dates to bring to the planning commission, so they could decide which works better for the seven of them.
Do a preference order, too.
Well, we don't even know what's gonna work for us, Councilwoman, but if you'd like to, you said, um, well, let's give them a, uh. February the eighth, well, February the eighth is what we all, even myself, is looking at, so we can give them that date as well. And see, um.
I'm fine with just giving them February the eighth. I was just wondering, because I mean, like I said, there's seven of them, so, yeah, I'm sure they'll bring their calendars, and they'll know when they have the meeting. If they, if they know ahead of time, so it'll be on their next agenda, so we'll know by our next meeting.
Actually, we'll have another meeting before they have one, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we could, hopefully, admin could email that out, maybe, and we can even, we can, uh, pick another date at our next meeting if we need to.
Let's do that.
February eighth for both, so since we are doing, um. Uh, item Q. You wanna go ahead and make that motion, since all of us agreed to February the eighth in contingent of. The dates for, uh, myself or all of council and also the planning commission, hopefully, y'all can be on one accord.
That, that's for Q and R, correct?
Yes, for Q and R. I don't know if y'all want to do it separately like the other thing, so I don't know. You, you guys wanna do both?
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to tentatively schedule a special meeting to review the capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. With the planning commission, um, on February eighth, as long as that date is available for the rest of council and planning commission.
Or.
Motion and support, please call the row.
Councilmember Lucito.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
And Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
And great job, you guys. Going to discussion on executive search services and Mr., uh.
Ma- Madam Mayor. Um. I, I'm gonna ask that we, we table this till our next council meeting for, for one main reason. Oh, maybe a couple, Madam Mayor. This is an, this is an extremely important discussion, extremely important. And I think, I think if we take the five applicants that have sent us their, their resumes, it's gonna take. Better than an hour, I would hope, uh, to go through each item, what we're looking for. Um, why we're looking for this, what are we looking for in the city manager, the do's and the don'ts, and what kind of, uh, education have, so. Out of respect for, uh, uh, Councilman DeMonico, I know he put this on the agenda, uh, but I would, I would, I would ask that we could table this. Until our first meeting in January.
I'll support that.
I just wanna make one brief, uh, comment, just publicly. That's fine with me. I, I mean, this is very important. Just please do, you know, research about the firms, you know, online. Talk to other people, you know, all that sort of thing. Um, I think that would have possibly helped in the past, but.
I think, I, I think you're saying, uh, Councilman DeMonico, be ready. Be ready. Don't open your packet that night. Be ready.
Yes.
You're absolutely right. Be ready.
In an effort to keep this meeting short, though, that is all I would like to say.
Well, I, I would hope that we don't put eighty, eighty-three items on the agenda at the next meeting.
Eight, eighty-four.
I'm ready to call the row.
Yes, sir. Please call the row. We have motion and support.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Next item, hold on one second, you are. Is discussion on Zaloto. I'm getting it together, fee waiver request. Zaloto. I don't know about the, had me messing up on the last, uh, council meeting with all these different words, council.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman.
Yes, so I did ask for this to be on the agenda, because this gentleman has come to our, uh, last couple of meetings, and so I kinda wanted to let him know. Where city council stood, so, um, I don't know how the rest of council feels, but I do support, um, administration's decision. After reviewing everything and speaking with administration on, you know, charging him the fee, I think that there was a violation and that. Um, you know, so I, I, I support what city administration has already done, so I just wanted to make sure we had a chance to actually discuss this.
Councilwoman DeMonico.
And then just one brief comment for me, too, uh, for items like this with, um. In this instance, I'd call it, you know, a minor, uh, fee, obviously, to Mr. Zatolo. It's not gonna be a minor fee, but. In regard, like in comparison to the fifty thousand dollar water bill that we've recently discussed. I believe just, yeah, items like this should be handled by city administration, and I, I'll just be supporting, uh, what their suggestion is, which of course is to. Uh, not waive, uh, the fee.
Are you supporting, uh, council?
I'll make a motion not to waive Mrs. Zaloto's fee fee.
Motion and support. No more discussion. Call the row, please.
Councilmember Lucito.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yeah.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Next item is discussion on participation in the state of Michigan opioid settlement. This was brought up by Councilman DeMonico. You have the floor, sir.
Right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I have some good news for us, uh, late in the agenda here, and I just found out a little more information yesterday. After talking to our state senator, Paul Boyno. Um, our city can receive, if we join the settlement, five hundred and one thousand dollars over eighteen years is the estimate. This is from federal opioid legislation, so across, I believe, all fifty states. I watched a real quick video from. M M L about it. Um, we're actually one of few states that has requested our, or, uh, state, one of few cities. That has not requested its funds. Um, so I just wanted to bring this up and just, uh, I guess to me, I wanna make sure that we. Apply for the settlement money. It's with, um, like four different defendants. There's Johnson and Johnson. Um, who created the opioids that, and they've been sued, and then three distributors also as part of this federal lawsuit. Um, nationalopioidsettlement.com is the, like, official website to use. And I have forwarded some information to Ms. Walton and Mr. Albright on how they can apply for the funding, but again, yeah. Five hundred and one thousand dollars for East Point over eighteen years. It is based basically on the amount of opioid pills and deaths. That have occurred in your community. It's not like a set amount, uh, per population or anything, so we did get. A significant amount of funding, which is of course not, you know, is good and bad news. Um, but that's, there. That's all.
Uh, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman, I think Councilwoman was next, uh.
She had, she had her, she had her hand up first.
Yes, I just had a question for administration, whether it be Mr. Albright or, um, Ms. Walton. Do we need to make a motion for you guys to apply for this money?
I would recommend, uh, a motion, yes, to, uh, join the settlement.
Okay. Councilman Curly.
Uh, no, I, I was just going to give some kudos to, uh. To Councilman, uh, DeMonico for searching that out, because I probably would have never done that, but, uh, that's great. That was the, how many years was that? Uh, eighteen years? I can just tell you right now, Madam Mayor, that. I'm gonna be here to collect that last check.
Sounds good.
A hundred and three, but we can all go out for dinner.
All right, I'm holding you to that.
How old are you now, Councilman? You said a hundred and three. How old are you now?
Eighty-five in two weeks.
Oh, wow. That's awesome. I know, Councilman DeMonico.
And you're buying, and you're buying.
Uh, sure, yeah, Madam Mayor.
I'll see him at Andries.
Okay.
Quick shout out, yeah, uh, Councilman DeMonico.
Uh, yeah, Madam Maryland, I'll motion, uh, that the, uh, city of East Point, um, join the, uh, state of Michigan opioid settlement.
Support. Motion and support, please call the row.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito.
Sorry, yes.
Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Oh, and one, sorry, one, one more quick comment, Madam Mayor, the, um, just, uh, I, it was in that email, but we need to apply by January second. So it is, the deadline's coming up very quickly, so.
Yeah, I think she's on it.
Okay.
Thank you. You're on it, right, Ms. Walton? You're on it.
Mr. Albright.
Yes.
Yes.
You guys are on it.
Mariah, I'll call you tomorrow, thank you.
Um, the next item is discussion on scheduling joint council and East Point Community School District Meeting. I put this on uh the agenda, of course, you all see, we all put something on the agenda um to start our new year off with a. A year of excellence. And so um I know we did a joint meeting before when I was a councilman. Councilmember, Councilwoman, and I think that was phenomenal, because we get to see what the school district needs and wants are. And how the uh city of East Point can help implement those needs and wants um from us. And uh just to see what's going on with the school, I know there are two separate entities, but when people move into a city, the first thing they look at is crime. In the school, in the resources, so if we don't know what's going on with our school, and we, you know, all this stuff work hand to hand, and we need to be on one accord. And I don't think we have been, and I think it's time for us to start uh Councilwoman.
Yeah, I was just gonna propose the date of February twenty-second.
February twenty-second? Let's do, that's my my birthday, the twenty-first, I don't know if I wanna.
I'll support that.
Well, uh hold on, if if it's mayor's birthday the night before, we can change it to March eighth, if everyone's okay with that.
I was trying to actually, I was trying to do it um sometime in January, actually, to start the year off in January with that.
But we do, we're gonna have to propose the date to the school board, and they're gonna have to approve it beforehand, too.
Okay, when is the, do we know when the next school board meeting is, or no?
The next school board meeting, I believe, is, would it be the tenth of January? Is that right, Mr. Bravo?
Yeah, as long as they didn't move it.
Second and fourth Monday, isn't it? Second and fourth Monday? So, yeah, I think it's January tenth is our next school for me.
You guys don't wanna, so when we, when they do their meeting and we propose it to them, what about the first um meeting in February? The first Tuesday in February?
We have a meeting that night.
I know, do you guys wanna do one in uh before that at six, or like we did, a special meeting? Was that uh, that was that February the second?
February first, um.
Oh, first, yeah, thank you.
We could do it possibly.
Yeah, like five o'clock or something.
At like five o'clock?
Uh, let's try five, February the first, in contingent with their schedule, and all of council, when you are, um when we come back to a council meeting, let's bring these dates back. And confirm it, if that's okay with you all.
That's fine.
So, look, that's our regular scheduled meeting, so we're gonna do a a joint meeting, we wanna do one at five o'clock, and then have a. Meeting at seven o'clock for regular council. Okay, I I'll follow back up with you when we uh, when we reconfirm dates, cuz that that time may not work, that five o'clock might not work for me, but. That's just, I'm just one person, so.
Well, you're that one important person, you make us all, you know.
We all are, we all are.
You make us all that one group, we all are one, so, yeah, say your uh your time schedule, uh Councilman Baker. And uh we'll come back to that date, uh February the fifth, I mean, February the first at five P M. You all wanna make a motion for that?
Sure, Mayor, motion that we um ask the school board to have a a joint meeting um on February first at five P M.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember De Monaco. Councilmember Lucido. Councilmember Curly. Mayor Owens. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Council, I'll be scheduling a lot of meetings today, and we might have to do it today after my birthday, I don't know, cuz I I put most of these things on here, huh? Um, the next item is discussion of scheduling a special meeting for a goal setting session. Um, the reason I put this on here is usually when we have a new city manager, we have goal setting sessions, and I believe with Ms. Doan, we didn't have one, so we went. Um that I don't, I don't remember, if you all do, then um disregard what I'm saying, but I don't remember, I know we had one with Mr. Cotton. So we go uh two years, and we gone into a third year without setting goals, that is not uh really good for a. A city, we need to set goals every year. Um, I know we have our capital improvement plans and stuff like that that's set, but things change. People change, the pandemic has changed us a lot, so um, and I wanna hear from the residents, um the staff. Council, and also our city manager, too, with some of her ideas, and also uh council, Councilwoman.
Yeah, we're just wondering if we could do that February fifteenth at six P M. Before our regular meeting?
Sounds good to me, um unless we come come back, cuz all of these dates are. Are out, you know, we putting it, and it's not Ashton Stone, cuz we have a couple meetings before that, and we adjust uh confirm it. But I I I can do February fifteen at six P M, council, Councilwoman.
Mr. Albright, do we have any show cause scheduled?
No, we do not. That uh city administration has not requested uh that any show cause uh here is be scheduled at this time.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't scheduling at the same time.
Thank you for saying that. Council, any discussion on the goal setting session?
On motion? Want a motion?
I think we got one, don't we?
On the fifteenth.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido. Councilmember De Monaco. Mayor Owens. Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Curly.
Next item is discussion on adding additional boards and commissions, I think I've talked about this over uh this year. Um, and as far as when I say that, I think we need like an Equity and Inclusion Commission and a couple other commissions that. Um I wanna bring back that, what council, I what council's ideas. So, for instance, I know the city of Detroit does a lot of things with their commissions for veterans, uh disabled, and also other uh groups. And we wanna make sure that when we make plans, or as far as parks, and um certain things, you wanna hear from. Other people that have other needs, and I think we're missing out on tho- those people, and I think they should have a voice at the table, so creating. Those commissions would be powerful. Um I think the veterans will be, you know, finding, you know, um grants and things like that. Uh equity and inclusion, um what is some other ideas of Ms. Walton of commissions that. You might have ran past, that would be some help uh with the city of East Point.
Um, we did see the Disability and Aging Services Commission that we had talked about previously, um and then the um Committee on Race and Equity. Um, that was through the the city of Detroit, and then you did mention a creating a veterans' commission that can focus on. Um and bring about different ideas um for veterans that are in the community.
Yeah, I think, and then I also thought about a commission for events, like this year was our first. A celebration, World for a City, it became a federal holiday for the Juneteenth event, then we had the Grashit Cruise. And a lot of city events moving forward, I think we should have a commission for that, so um a board that actually um possibly. Get sponsorships, you give them a certain amount of money and run those programs, I don't think um myself or a council should always, you know. Either, I think uh Mr. De Monaco paid last time, and um I did some sponsorships for Juneteenth, and we did a lot on that. But if we have a commission that can collaborate with other cities, and also find the funds to pay for certain things, and find grants as well, so. What's that, a veterans uh commission, um one for equity and inclusion, uh one for events, I don't know what we call that. Events, uh coordination, and equity inclusion would uh be for all type of things, um. Like you said, what was it, disability and things like that, because I know a lot of people, since I've been elected, uh would like to see a park. For their disabled kids, we don't have anything in the city of East Point for our disabled uh group, for our kids that's the they disabled or have something to do. I know with Rare, they have a a group that meets up, but a lot of people don't know about these things, and it, if you don't know about it, it doesn't exist, and I want us to be a better. Community by um engaging into these different groups, and let's start now. Councilwoman.
So, yes, um, the playground equipment at Roxanna Park is handicap accessible. And there is a handicap swing there, with the Parks Commission, when they've been doing any new um playground equipment, they have been trying to incorporate. Um the handicap community into their decision-making when choosing that playground equipment, so if you look at Guts Park and um. Roxanna Park, they should be um wheelchair accessible, um and there is, like I said, a handicap swing. So. They they are definitely taking that, the Parks Commission themselves has taken that into consideration when we're doing these upgrades.
Okay, cuz I know Frazier, when I went to go visit them almost three years ago, they dedicated a whole park. Uh to the the um disabled, and so many others communities, and we have tons of parks, so um and then. Some of those people reached out to me and said that wasn't enough, a swing here and a swing there, so I mean, we're trying, we're doing the best that we can, so how can we do better? Is what I asked council and the residents, and um I don't have any di- disabled children or. But I have friends that have disabled children, and they tell me their wants and needs, and just because I don't have uh disabled children or anything like that, doesn't mean it's not important to me. And so um, so I just want to make this uh of importance, and I just need help on how to do that, so. If there's people out there that have grants or know how to get money for the veterans, or know how to get resources for our veterans, or. Disabled and and groups and things like that, and have events for our disabled uh children, or, you know, um things like that. We don't have those things here, and we're a family town, so we have to incorporate everybody, so uh those commissions are something that I wanted to discuss, and maybe we can come back. And then council can let me know what kind of um commissions that they prefer. Um to to add on, and what that looks like, so, you know, when we have these commissions, I think, I don't know how that goes. Uh Ms. Um Walton, do we have to have a a, you know, some type of. You know, some type of description and things like that for each one of them, and how many m- board members and things like that? We can look at another city and how many board members they have and what they do, maybe we can start from there.
Yes, um I think it'd be working with uh Mr. Albright and getting an ordinance created for a specific um border commission that you'd like to to create.
Okay, Council, what what's your ideas? I wanna hear what you have to say, Councilman De Monaco.
Uh sure, so, yeah, and some of the other topics you just mentioned, we previously discussed, uh while we had on the agenda in. June twenty twenty about the Senior Citizens Advisory and Police Traffic Safety. Uh advisory commissions, I think that would cover a lot of what you discussed just now, we have those in our ordinances already, so. Um, I guess, uh if you put people forward, we can uh uh start that up. Um, obviously doesn't cover all of the different uh topics you brought up, um and then, I guess, the. The one other comment, maybe on like a a gen, I don't know about a general event planning commission, though. Um, I think like a lot of commissions, you know, plan events, and then like, terms of you mentioned like the Grashit Cruise. Oh, like a committee not um tied to the city, puts that together, and then, of course, we approve the special event application. But I think uh a too generic of one could cause issues coordinating between different. Commissions and stuff like that, uh maybe if something had a little more detail or something, maybe, but uh, I guess that's just some of my general thoughts and. Uh what you're suggesting.
Well, I guess I was saying, you know, um as a city as a whole, I believe most cities that move a certain way. They have someone that coordinates the city-wide events, so a city-wide event is something, as far as we have to come up with Juneteenth, Juneteenth. Was something that just uh was something new, we wasn't prepared for it, and also our Christmas tree lighting. Uh we have several events in East Point, and we need to have something where people uh delegate roles, role, you know, roles is delegated to implement these events. Where people are ready, and you know, like this year, we wasn't, we had no clue who was gonna decorate, uh we had no funding for a decorator. Um just things like that to make it better, um we don't, you know, just say if we want to have something in downtown area, I know. Before I was elected, before I moved here, I know they had an ice sculpting event here, downtown area, we had a, y'all had a lot of events that. Have moved away, and if we put that um in the hands of a commission, that we can bring a lot of events back, I know a lot of people are talking about a food truck event. That's a city event, or different events that we might wanna uh do, you know, and how do we do that if we don't have things set in order? To help us move uh those things along, that's what I'm saying, so, Councilman.
These events usually aren't thrown and uh uh coordinated by the city, though, you know, we just. We approve maybe a special event application, but other philanthropic groups, like the East Point Lions, or I think you're talking about maybe a. Chill Fest, I think it was called a while back in the Eastbrook Commons or something. Uh, I think I had one a karaoke thing when I was in high school uh there, uh Believe by Share, oh, yeah. Uh with a couple friends, um but uh, yeah, I think most of other groups do those, the tree lighting is the one exception. But usually that is basically done by Rare then, and Rare does it, you know, with a little bit of coordination, obviously, or good amount of coordination with the city. Um but then the other events, I think that were mentioned um are not uh likes, the city does not put those uh together. So I think we would just need to make sure those are are separate, we're not gonna start planning events for, you know, we don't have the resources to plan events. Um with all these other different organizations.
Yeah, that's why we're creating a commission that can do the events for us, that reaches out to those organizations. And um make it happen, that's that's probably what I was saying, you know, so we don't have to, everything are already be in line, the dates will be together. The sponsors will be together, and everything will be lined up in an order, I just, like I said, I just want the city to move in excellence, and I think. The old way is old way, and now we need to do it a better way, and I just saw a better way, and other cities are doing it, and why not East Point, so. Um I guess we can come back to uh other, I think you said, you've mentioned two councilmen that's already. Um in the charter, that we probably can bring back and look at.
Yeah, and June June twenty twenty, uh you added them to the agenda, the um Senior Citizens Advisory and Police Traffic Safety. We've got ordinances, I think we just basically haven't uh. Uh implemented, well, not implemented, they they used to exist, well, at least the police traffic safety somewhat recently, I don't know about the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission. Uh somewhat recently, we just have nobody on those boards anymore.
Oh, wow, so maybe we can just see, um can we bring it back, I know, uh me being on the um housing commission. It's a lot of seniors that wanna be active and want something to do, they always ask me, and I hate to go back and, you know, and tell them. I'm still working on it, and so, um I guess we can just put it out there and see who applies, you know, we got a lot of veterans in the city that would love to be on the board. We have a lot of um groups, and um parents, and people that are are disabled or know of, you know. Organizations and resources for the disabled that might wanna create that commission, and um have events and things like that, and I think it's it's a start. So, um. Yes, sir, Councilman Curly.
Yeah, and these I I ideas sound good, they really do, and it would cer- certainly enhance the. Our city, and I I would just let you know that I have been involved for twenty-one years with the Cruising Grashit. And we start, we start every year after the one is over, about ten months before the next event. Uh it takes that long, so we wanna just remember that this is not just a, you know, we're gonna have something next weekend, it's gonna take a lot of work. A lot, uh the people that's gonna be involved, they're gonna have to be dedicated, and willing willing to spend the time, and willing to go out there and find. Sponsors for whatever whatever we're gonna do, but um like this is December, our our cruise is in June. Day before Father's Day, we're we're about eighty percent ready. And that last twenty percent, that last twenty twenty percent is the toughest, uh oddly enough. Everybody says, why you should take the hardest stuff first, I said, no, you you don't know, you don't know what's going on, but anyway, it'll work out. And uh I'm excited about all that, all those ideas, and uh bottom line, let's make it happen.
Okay, so Council, is that okay with uh our city attorney um looking into these different commissions and having something written written up? So that we can look at it before uh we approve or even consider it, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I'm not necessarily opposed to um looking into those committees, if he wants to bring some information back to us, my biggest concern is um. Lack of volunteerism to be able to fill them.
Yeah, well, you know what, it never, we never had a commission of the, you know, like these, so people probably wa- you know, was waiting for the opportunity. So let's uh think positive, think in excellence, that's what we are, and let's see what happens. Ms. Albright?
Is there a specific uh motion or directive then you want to give our office from the council?
Thinking, I'm thinking veterans. For the veterans, um, the, I don't know, equity and inclusion will always uh what what that will all include, but I want to make sure um my wording is appropriate. So that's why I want to look. And then I think uh Ms. Walton said the disabled. And um I think it's a better word um for that. As far as, you know, that group, I want to make sure I'm uh correct in what I say and what I do. So once we find that background, I just want to make sure we cater to everyone. And also, um, I think we want to, uh, I want to relook at the seniors and you said transportation one, Mr. DeMonaco?
Uh, police and police traffic safety.
Yeah, that would be good too, because we can look about, we can uh have people on there about the traffic and the speeding. And that would also been good about the scooters too, to have them have their comments and things like that. Does anybody else think of another, Councilwoman?
Yeah, so the police and uh traffic safety ones and the senior advisory board, those are already in our ordinance. So I think Mr. Albright could just update those two. But the other ones that you're recommending, I think that administration needs to maybe um do some research into those and maybe come up with a proposal to council. And then from there, council can approve it to for Mr. Albright to write something up.
Right. Um, do you all have any other commissions that would be a good idea for East Point? Hey, I think that's enough, all right? I think that's about uh three new ones and then an additional two that we we don't uh use. So I don't think we need emotional support on that. I think administration is just going to look more into it and then come back to us with the information and then we can vote. How does that sound? Okay, um, the next uh item, we're almost done, is discussion on scheduling a Welcome to East Point event. Um, I think I talked about this uh the last couple uh thing about a year or two. And um what that looks like, Welcome to East Point is an event. I don't know what other cities do, but I would think that they were just like Mark Hackle, um, our executive. Uh, he has Make McComber Your Home. He's branding the uh the county and why you should make McComber your home. And so in branding and marketing, it looks good to brand and market our city and tell people uh why they should live in East Point and the things that are in the city of East Point. And we want to welcome them. We have a lot of new residents, new businesses, and we want to make sure that they know uh what we have to offer them. Um, as far as in that event, uh, it would be a city event where we would invite our commission. We would invite our school district. Also, we only have one private school. A lot of people don't even know St. Peter's is a private school and that they can enroll their children. Um, and they don't know about the the two school districts. And they would apply, uh, apply. They don't know that we have a Kiwanis Club. They don't know we have a Rotary Club. Um, they don't know about Abthelos. They don't know about so many things. I think we still have the uh the Boys and Girls Scouts and now we have the Boys and Girls Club now. So it's so many things that we have in the city that has not been marketed to our our residents. Um, and now we have these commissions that are going to be open. People might want to volunteer. We have an urban garden. When I did the bike uh event this year, it was been people here for twenty years that know we had an urban garden. So we can have an urban garden come out and let them know that they can um garden there and that we also give out uh free fruits and vegetables to the community and that we also teach uh gardening there. But we have all these resources for the city residents and nobody know about it. Nobody knows about PACE. Nobody uh knows a lot about the Neighborhood Watch. So it'll be a a big event and letting people know the city that they live in and also uh the businesses can um actually be a part of that. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce, a lot of people uh don't know what the Chamber of Commerce is when they move into the city of East Point. Our businesses don't have no idea what it does for them and what it is. And so it's just, and everybody at least get a Welcome to East Point uh bag. I think we do that anyway. When we have new residents, we give them bags, but at the same time, it's only so much you can put in the bag. When you can put a a face to a name, it's just more welcoming. And I think um that would be a good idea. And we were talking about doing a subcommittee uh for that event. And I'm getting that started and doing something like that sometime in June, excuse me. Councilwoman?
Yeah, um, right now, I don't feel comfortable planning any events because even like along with the Grashit Cruise, who knows what's going to happen? Um, with the numbers of COVID right now, I wouldn't want to start working on something like this, um, not knowing where we're going to be in June.
Okay.
Councilwoman, I say to uh, what you said about Cruising Grashit, our our cruising, what did, what would, what did you mean by that?
Well, I'm just saying, like, we we don't know if that's going to affect the Grashit Cruise even right now with, you know, hopefully by spring, the numbers are going down. You know, but right now COVID is out of control in Michigan. Like, I don't know. You know, I think we, you guys might have to adjust it where we we're not doing like the ceremony or something like that for the, you know, Grashit Cruise, where everyone's not on stage. Like, we don't know what's going to happen between now and June. So I would just hate to start planning an event not knowing what COVID is going to be in June.
Right.
I mean, they don't know, we gonna, we don't. Like, you know, the gathering parts of it.
Well, I understand that, but we don't know if we gonna um live uh after this council meeting, but you still plan on waking up in the morning and celebrating Christmas, right? So I'm just saying, you know, we still want to. I don't want to stop us planning stuff because of COVID and all these other things, because we just plan to go back in person. Um, and a lot of other things. So planning it and then saying uh what's going on and looking at the numbers and then, I mean, we can al- always cancel any event. Um, we're not uh putting too much money into it. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, COVID was just as high and uh we took part in the Grashit Cruise earlier this year. And also a couple of things in parking lots and, Councilwoman.
Well, the numbers in June were about like twenty percent of what they are right now when it comes to COVID numbers. So they were a lot lower. They're about five times as much as they were in June when we did Juneteenth and the Grashit Cruise. So that's why, like I said, right now, just me, I don't feel comfortable planning an event or having administration spend time planning an event. Um, if a subcommittee wanted, if everyone else wants to participate and plan something, that's fine. I'm not going to say I'm going to be totally against it. I just wouldn't want to spend the time doing that right now.
I know, and the next one is the State of the City event. Did you want to, did you all still want a State of the City event? Because all these are events that I put on here for for East Point. Well, the State of the City we can do via Zoom, but the Welcome to East Point, I don't think we could do via Zoom because it would be too many, you know, um, businesses and things like that. But we can try to make it work via Zoom. I don't know how we can do that. That's why a subcommittee is important, because they organize it.
Well, as far, as far as the I, as far as the state of the, State of the City is concerned, we, we all know by now the Chamber of Commerce has officially canceled the State of the City. The Chamber of Commerce being the one that is totally responsible for that and always have been for for years and years and years. And I'm not sure that the fact that the counts, that the chamber canceled the City, the City that, that we can go ahead and do it on our own. I'm I'm not sure how that would work.
No, we wasn't going to do it on our own. We were just going to, since it is COVID with both events, I'm going to just go talk about both events. And I put both of them on there and they are, consist of uh people being in attendance. Um, the State of the City can always be uh via Zoom. Um, I did a couple of events via Zoom with Habitat for Humanity and it was successful. So um, I don't know, maybe you want to, Councilwoman, you're on mute too.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. On for State of the City, I know that the Chamber has recommended to cancel State of the City. Um, maybe we could reach out to Mr. um McLeod over at the high school and Judge Galen at the court, because in, along with you, Madam Mayor, because you three are usually the speakers. And maybe you guys could write something up and we could just post it on our Facebook page and kind of have like a State of the City update with the three different areas. Um, you know, you guys could write something up, maybe we could post it to keep our residents informed. But um actually like hosting an event this year, I think maybe we should just, you know, postpone it till next year. But that way then, at least it will give our residents an opportunity to go on there and read it and, you know, know what's going on in our city and our schools and in our courts. So I would be okay if administration wanted to reach out to them and see if they wanted to do something like that. I think that would be a good idea.
That's a good idea. We can do, make a video, me, um, director and Judge Galen and um also Mr. Blum, he can be part of, part of that movie. So does anybody, because me and uh our, the mayor pro tem are going back and forth. We got five council members, so I want to hear from the other, you other three, what do you think about the uh Welcome to East Point event and also the State of the City being via Zoom possibly? What are your thoughts?
Well, for me, I just think they're worth revisiting. I mean, because like right now, we have a lot of back and forth. And just for the sake of time, uh, this is the holiday week. Um, I I, I'm not shooting down either idea because I think they're, they could be uh really good. Um, but I think just for the sake of time and and since we don't have anything concrete, that these are just, I think it's good to look into them, see what options we have and then revisit them. I think that would be the best thing to do right now.
Okay. Well, we are revisiting it. I talked about Welcome to East Point two years ago.
No, I I remember that, but uh uh I'm, yeah, I I remember, but um I'm just saying right now, we don't know how we can do it, you know, what options we have. So that that's the only thing that I'm saying, because there's nothing concrete just yet. So I think it's it's good and I think we should just continue looking into it. But, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think we should, we need to necessarily continue going, you know, back and forth. Um, you know, we're talking about it and that's, that's really where it starts and I think that's great.
Thank you. Now, what do you think of uh State of the City, Councilwoman Baker?
Um, well, I I'm, I got mixed feelings about it and only, uh, the only reason, like, I I'm not against a a video or anything like that. If it's a chamber event, I guess I've, I would want to reach out to them and maybe get some feedback from them. Like, how do they feel about uh videos being posted or would they want to have some kind of input? Because it, being that it's a chamber event, I don't want to, I wouldn't want it to look like we're trying to just, well, since they canceled it, we're going to still just kind of go on without them. You know, I would just, I I would feel comfortable maybe if somebody had some dialogue with them just to see if there's some kind of you know, um, middle ground or, you know, something that can be done where, you know, one can help the other. But um, you know, yeah, I mean, updating the residents on, you know, where we are. I mean, I think that's good and it's just a matter of really how do we do that with with our COVID numbers rising, you know? And then, and that is definitely something we have to think about, you know, unfortunately, but we all do. So um, I I I guess my thing is I wouldn't want it to just look like we're disregarding their cancellation. And I, and I get it, their cancellation, they're canceling at a venue. But, you know, I think just reaching out to them would still look good, would look better. So just my opinion.
Councilwoman Lucido?
Yeah, so maybe we can have administration reach out to them and ask them their opinions if they'd be okay. And I mean, if, whether, whatever you guys decide, if it's a video or if it's just something in writing, I'll just say personally, I prefer something in writing only because if I see something on Facebook, I'm not going to watch a video, but I'll read something. Because usually when I'm on Facebook, it's when I'm like in the doctor's office or something like that, when I I'm not going to listen to anything that's like loud. So just a heads up, I think more people would actually read it than watch a video. But, you know, whatever you guys decide on when it comes down to that. But yeah, I agree with Mr. Baker. We should reach out to the chamber. I don't want them to think we're stepping on their toes or going over them. But I think it's a good idea to, you know, update the community on what's going on.
And Councilman Crowley?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I I I guess I just feel that I I guess I feel that I have to respond to the comments about the Cruising Grashit. That's not going to happen in June. Um, of course, we don't know what's going to, the condition of the country is going to be in June. We don't know what the condition of the country is going to be in nineteen thirty-eight, two thousand thirty-eight. Um, but I believe our request from the council is going to be on our agenda the first meeting um in January. And um, we have a lot of intelligent people on our committee that's been there for twenty-one years. And uh, we know if we have to cancel it, we can do that. But, you know, we 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 got to move forward on this and if the council says, well, we're not going to do it because we're afraid, well, you know, be afraid about something else. Um, we're adults and we can take, I think we can take care of that problem by, but I just, as president of the of the Grashit Cruise for for eighteen years, guys, I just have to bring my, my, what my, what's in my gut right now is saying, oh, my God. Are we going to go through this again? You know, we canceled it one time, was it two years ago? And uh, we don't know what it, what the condition is going to be. We just don't. And if it gets close to June and we see it's even worse, we're going to say, hey, pull the plug. Give the sponsors their money back and uh we won't have it. But I think that decision ought to be made by the committee and not the council. That's it.
Thank you. I think this was, you know, we all put stuff in the agenda for discussion and opinions and we're not going to always agree and that's fine, you know? But we all listen to each other's ideas and that's why we have the hearing of the public, that's why we have the council. And these are just some ideas that I thought would be uh awesome for our city. So we don't have to decide now. These are just ideas. So um, we can move right along and thank you all for considering my ideas and and listening to them. I think we got a lot done today and it's not even ten o'clock yet, so. So I think we are at payroll and bills, everyone.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll motion to pay the bills in the amount of two million, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy cents.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. The next item is the Hearing of the Public. This is uh the last hearing of the public of the year. So I want to hear from our residents. Um, you get three minutes. And um, the Hearing of the Public, the second Hearing of the Public is now open. Mr. Gadsden, please.
Um, I see no hands and nothing in the chat. Oh, I'm sorry. We have an iPhone.
Okay, um, yes, um, iPhone. I'm sorry, I don't see a name. Hi, good evening.
Hello?
Hi, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, this is, okay.
Oh. Is somebody else speaking?
No, I had call iPhone, but you said calling user number three, so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, okay, so um, in addition to the first comment, um, this is just to um add more comments. Um, so y'all expect us to pay our taxes as homeowners. You expect us to maintain our property and we do so. But yet, when it comes to city officials and public servants doing their jobs, we get all kinds of excuses. And the uh default answer seems to be it's a civil matter, which in other words is basically, we don't want to be bothered. We're not dealing with this. You have the building department saying, well, the police don't issue the tickets. And then the police department says they submit the reports to the building department. And the building department doesn't do anything. Um, and by the way, who is handling the traffic tickets and civil infractions? Because the city attorney is supposed to be handling that. But um, the paralegal said that um the city attorney is only handling criminal matters. Hmm, since when? So there's all this finger pointing going on and nothing is being done. So you're basically squandering our tax dollars. And if you don't like the criticism, then you shouldn't be public servant. You shouldn't be city officials. You have a preamble to follow. And you don't. You say the prayers at the beginning of the meeting. Well, those are just empty words. You're just mouthing the words. There was a resident from two weeks ago who called you out on that for ignoring residents. There was a resident from two weeks ago who called you out on that for ignoring residents. So you have a lot of angry homeowners that are just really fed up. And people are leaving East Point, both homeowners and tenants alike, because they're just sick of it. And again, I can't stress the importance. Y'all need to hold that cop accountable. You don't get a free pass screaming in somebody's face when COVID cases are spiking out of control. And y'all better figure out who's gonna charge that, that tenant who is out of control with public nuisance and disturbing the peace. You're, you're failing to do your job. Do your job, I don't care how many agencies I have to report this to. You need to do your job.
Thank you so much. Happy holidays and have a happy new year. God bless you. Ms. Yopa, good evening.
Good evening. I'm, I'm very happy to be here. I came in really late. Um, I did hear a little bit about, um, some veteran activity. Um, and I just wanted to remind all council members that the VFW on Nine Mile, East Point's very own finest VFW, we would be more than honored to sponsor any veteran oriented, um, event or actually any event, if we don't have something else going on. Um, please look into using us for anything, uh, free of cost to the city, of course. Um, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you know, that's who I had in mind, Ms. Yopa, was the VFW hall. Uh, so thank you for saying that. And, um, we have Ms. Plant, good evening.
Good evening, how you doing?
Oh, good, how are you?
I'm good. Um, I just have a quick question, um, about contacting the building department. I know that McKenna has taken over and I'm looking for like an email address um, of somebody, of a contact there, cause I don't know, um, what the current one is. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Plant. If someone who controls the chat can type that in, the chat for Ms. Plant, I appreciate it. Um, someone just did, maybe our city manager or Mr. Gadsden did for you, Ms. Plant.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We have anyone else at this time would like to speak?
I must see no other hands at this time or anything in the chat. Oh, I'm sorry, the iPhone is back again.
Okay, iPhone, you're on, hi, how are you?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yes, okay, this is Deyanda Easley, hello to everyone.
Hi.
I just want to prime in, on March 16th, I was sworn in on the Parks Commission. I was able to attend, I'm sorry, March 16th, 2020. I was able to attend the first few meetings, then the pandemic happened. Everything switched to Zoom, which I was really unfamiliar with. I did experience a few hardships as my family caught COVID, my business was affected by virus. It was just a really dark time for me, but now I'm in a much better space. The ob, the obstacles that prevented me from participation with the, um, Parks Commission meetings have been corrected. I'm now learning to use Zoom. I have an active email, which is my name, deyandaeaslee@gmail.com, and I'm just ready.
Hey, were you done, Ms. Easley?
She muted herself.
Incidentally, yeah.
You muted yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, I know this whole new thing is.
Yeah, you know what? I apologize. So what I was saying is I love the city of East Point and I would love for the opportunity to be back on the Parks Commission. I did correct everything that prevented me from being an active participant and I am back now, I'm back and I'm ready. So if there's anyone that wants to contact me, I'm here. I will be in attendance to every meeting if I'm allowed to be back on that Parks Commission. Thank you so much. Thank you to all the council men and women for everything that you do for the city and just thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Easley.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Say nine. The second hearing of the public is now closed. Going straight to mayor and council report, starting with Councilman Curly.
Now, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, a couple of things, I just wanna report, we did have a library meeting tonight and we talked a little bit about, um, friends of the library. They, uh, you know, they use that money that they get from the bottles and cans that you bring over to the library and I would hope that you continue to do that. But they, um, are in the process of buying a chess table. Uh, for those who like to play chess, uh, they'll be able to play it over to the, uh, at the library. And they're buying material to, uh, reupholster all of the community chairs that are there in the library. So your, your endeavor and your kindness to bring your cans and bottles over to the library has been much appreciated. Well, I'm just gonna say this, Madam Mayor, council members and everybody who, who was watching. I've been in this city for 65 years and I don't think anybody has ever challenged my faith in God and my faith in, uh, the Baptist church that I have went to for 75 years. Um, and how many times have I asked people to pray for the veterans and try to get the veterans out of the cardboard boxes as they sleep in the streets? Even tonight, even as we're talking, somewhere in the United States, we have veterans who shouldn't be sleeping in boxes, they should be sleeping in a nice warm room. I'm upset about that. Um, but I feel bad that we would be accused of not being sincere. And I, and I, I know Sarah's not gonna say anything, but the prayers that Sarah gives, they're from the heart. They're from the heart. She didn't write that thing up 10 minutes before we went on the air. And I would just ask this, of course, everybody's gonna say have a Merry Christmas and I'll say have a Merry Christmas too. But the latest count of the people who have died in America because of the virus has now exceeded 800,000 people. How many people has that affected? The person that died? But what all, what about all the, what about the moms and the dads and the grandpa and the grandpas and the kids? So I'm gonna ask you, regardless of what we've been accused of, to pray for all of the people who are still suffering because of their loss. So, Madam Mayor, that's probably more than what I should have said, but God bless everybody.
Thank you, Councilman Curly, that was awesome. Um, Councilman Baker?
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, uh, to everyone, thank you for attending, thank you for sharing your thoughts. Um, you know, with this job, we do have to take on the criticism, not just the compliments and the praise. And, you know, sometimes, uh, there are matters that we look into and we have to wait for responses. We have to wait for answers and, um, sometimes we have to do follow-ups and things of that nature. So that being what it is, um, there are some things that we cannot do. There are some boundaries we can't overstep. Uh, that being what it is, you know, we, we just do the best we can, but we are all human. And, um, you know, we try and, and that, that's really what we can do. Um, and when we make mistakes or if we fall short or if there's something that we didn't do or if we forgot to do something, uh, we are human, but that's where, um, you know, we welcome that, that, that feedback. Um, that being what it is, uh, I'm just gonna say, thank you for everybody and thank you to everyone who attended. And I, I hope that you all have a good holiday, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you too, thank you. Councilman DeMonico?
Yeah, just like to say, congrats to all the new board and commission members and reappointed commission members and just, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year to everybody. You know, stay, uh, stay safe over these next couple of weeks. Of course, like Mr. Curly said, keep COVID in mind, just play it safe. Hopefully, uh, everyone's vaccinated by now. If not, please get out there, get it, get your booster if you haven't. I've got my booster, so just, uh, yep, stay safe and I guess, uh, see you in 2022.
Wow, God bless you, thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Lucido?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I would like to start out by, um, wishing everyone a happy holiday and a Happy New Year and welcoming all the new board members, uh, and commission members. Um, I'm excited to see some of your faces. I know a lot of commissions have been having a hard time getting quorum and things like that. So I'm excited that we finally got those filled, so these boards and commissions can start moving forward with getting things accomplished in the city, because they're all definitely really useful. And, um, maybe we'll even have some more boards coming up in this new year, which would be exciting if that worked out. Um, I just wanna let, um, administration know, I appreciate all of your hard work throughout this last year. I know it's not been easy with the pandemic. Um, and I do appreciate all of everything you guys have been doing for us to make our jobs easier, um, including, um, to caller in user three, um, Ms. Maragian. I just wanted to let you know, like, I do read all of your emails, I understand all of your concerns. Um, I've had conversations with city administration, the building department. Um, and I'm sorry if you don't think that, you know, we're doing our job, but, uh, we are the legislative branch and we do the best that we can every time we come to the table, um, to work together and do what's best for the city of East Point. And that's all I have this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, first, at my last meeting, sometimes I get, um, I get forgetful on what to say because sometimes we get on here and we have some negative Nancy's on here and I, and it takes me off my square and I'm learning to stop doing that. Um, so the good news that I forgot to tell, uh, you all, if, even if I did say it again, I'm gonna say it, if, even if I did say it, I'm gonna say it again, cause I'm so happy about it. Uh, the $5,000 bank's giving that we, um, that East Point was trying to get for the Boys and Girls Club. We won that and I'm super excited. Uh, we put that on the Facebook page, we also put that on our, uh, website, I believe, I'm not sure. But we got $5,000 for the Boys and Girls Club. And, um, also, uh, what else did I? I just want to thank everybody who made a Christmas tree lighting phenomenal as well, directors, the council. Uh, I think, uh, Ms. Yopa came up with some ideas and the ideas that came from the residents was amazing. Um, all our talents and things like that, we have so many talents and gifts. And if we don't, uh, have those talents and gifts that are available to the city of East Point, people outside of the city come and, uh, give us their gifts. So we were very blessed about that. So I also wanna give a, uh, congrats to Ms. Terry Denning. She was appointed by the governor to the sixteenth district court. Uh, so we always wanna, um, give congrats to our elected officials. I would like to thank every director of the city of East Point as well as everyone that works here. I would like to thank all those on the commissions that use their time to volunteer and help the city move forward. I would like to thank the residents for participating at the council meetings and also local events. And I also would like to thank every investor organization that worked with the city of East Point to make us, uh, do better, give us grant money and so much more. And lastly, I would like to thank our elected officials, uh, that sit at the table with me um, and the board for this year and taking the time to make the city better. I really appreciate that. And our new city manager and our, our staff that, uh, sit with us at the table as well. So I just wanna thank everybody for making this year possible. We had some ups and downs and disagreements and things like that, but that's what family do and we are family. And so I believe next year, uh, we will be excellent. We have new ideas at the table, we have, uh, new experiences and backgrounds. And, um, this is our last meeting of the year and I just wanna thank God for seeing us through, cause we're still here. I know Council, uh, Member Curly and a lot of our council members had COVID and some of our staff, but we still here. And those that are not here to celebrate this new upcoming year, let's pray for the families and things like that. But next year will be a year like no other for the city of East Point. I pray excellence and new beginnings, not only for the city, but each and every one of you and your family. May God bless you in this new year. Thank you for helping me move the city forward as the mayor of East Point. God bless you and God keep you. And saying that, yeah, can I get a motion for a German, please?
Of course you can, so moved.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the last roll of 2021.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
I'm having steak.
Call a special meeting, Harvey.
Yes.
No.
I'm having.
We're going into a call session, right?
I'm having steak.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
And Mayor Owens?
Yes, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, everyone. God bless you.
Thank you.
Sarah, I'm, I'm having, I'm having steak, Sarah.
Oh, I'm sure you will.
All right, Rob, I'll see you in the morning.